The meeting to order. Mrs. Nash, can we have a roll call, please? Yes?
Here.
Ms. Bowlen?
Here.
Dr. Flowers?
Present.
Mr. Leary?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll now have Mrs. Bowlen lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item will be a moment of silence. And we'd ask that you keep the following individuals in your -- that have passed away in your thoughts and prayers. Evelyn Groves, mother of TMS principal Lori Sullivan. Joseph Severia, father of Melissa Turner, TMS teacher, father-in-law of Kelly Turner, Pell custodian, and father-in-law of Elizabeth Severia, TMS paraeducator. Martin Curtis, father-in-law of Bruce Aldrich, Pell teacher, and uncle of Ellen Rayner, Pell teacher. Ann Croft, grandmother of Erin Clark, HR director. Barbara Coffey, aunt of Nancy Coyne, TMS paraeducator. Michael Logan, father-in-law of Catherine Logan, speech and language pathologist. Claire DeRozers, aunt of Patrick Loggie, RHS teacher. Anna Del Nero, aunt of Colleen Pascal, TMS teacher. Jan -- I'm sorry, Jane Fraser, aunt of Tricia Lentz, RHS clerk. Christopher Soars, brother of Susan Soars, Rogers High School teacher. Louis Patello, uncle of Rebecca Farrell, TMS paraeducator. Mary Richard, aunt of Stephanie Sullivan, TMS teacher. Mary McCormick, great aunt of Colleen Burns, Jermaine superintendent. We'd ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have the Rogers student for the update? TM -- oh, okay. So this evening we'll have our first report on the monthly activities of Rogers High School students and the Student Council by Zobid -- Zia? Zobida?
Zobeda.
Zobi.
Zobeda.
Zobeda, I'm sorry, Zobeda.
Hello, everyone. I am a senior at Rogers High School. I recently won Student Council President. So far, we have been planning Spirit Week, Pepper Alley, and our sports teams are doing amazing. Tennis is undefeated. Football is currently undefeated. And our quarterback, Newsome, Mr. Newsome's son, is doing really well. That's what we have for this month.
Okay. Does anybody on the school committee have any questions? All righty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item up is Resolutions and Certificates of Achievements. And the first ones are for student recognition in the Skills USA National Competition. And the -- this evening, the following students placed at the Skills USA National Competition held in Louisville, Kentucky in June. This evening, we should have with us Abigail Moja, who placed seventh in the nation in commercial baking. We also -- and you can stare right up there, Abigail, so everybody gets -- next, we have Colin McCabe and Michael Ng, placed 10th in the nation in cybersecurity. This is the first year that cybersecurity was offered at the national. Colin and Michael are both enrolled full-time at CCRI as Rogers High School seniors. All right. You can come closer if you'd like to take a picture, but you want to come right up? You're good? You can take a picture up here closer. No, no problem. Very good, thank you. Congratulations, Charles students and representatives, thank you. The next group, if -- did you want to do the ROTC? The next group is our Viking cadets from the ROTC. We recognize the following cadets for their service to the Newport community at the Moving Wall, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial recently in Newport. So first up tonight, we have Cadet Karen Igano. Our next cadet, Monique Allen. Next cadet, Lucian Sullivan. Cadet Justin DeCosta. Cadet Jada Malkazik. Cadet Jose Cortez. Cadet James Barry. Cadet Jackson Bunker. And Cadet Tyler Wright. We also would like to recognize their leader, Captain -- we'd also like to recognize, I don't believe he's here, but Captain Mark Turner from the local VFW, and Ms. Kim Shute, Memorial Funeral Home for their service to our veterans in the Newport community and for their leadership, patriotism, and inspiration to our Viking students in organizing the Moving Wall Vietnam Veterans Memorial. And Mrs. Bowlen was involved, so if she'd like to say a few words?
I just want to comment that it was great seeing these young people come and support this event. They came on the evening that all the veterans were being honored, the Vietnam vets, and they actually walked with them down the gauntlet, kind of the -- was all lit up with lights, and they helped escort some of these veterans that are aging to, you know, get to the wall. And it was really very impressive. And we also then had many classrooms show up. I think we had all the 7th, 8th grade and all the history classes come, and they got to spend time at the Moving Wall. So it was a really incredible experience for our students here in Newport. And I want to thank them again for their --
All righty. Next order is the presentations, and we have a presentation this evening on the computer -- It's after this? This presentation this evening, Computer Science for Rhode Island, and Dr. Bean, Assistant Superintendent, will lead the presentation.
Good evening, everybody. This past summer, I had a great team of teachers and administrators from K-12, and we worked on developing a computer science implementation plan for our district. We presented at the opening day, and every school has done a presentation at their school on the work that we did that was specific to their school. But basically, we created a district computer science program in order to meet the needs of all our students K-12. It gave us a great opportunity for a lot of vertical conversations with our computer science teachers and our STEM teachers, as well as our administrators. The work that we did over the summer was in collaboration with about 15 other districts around the state and with the Governor's Task Force and with URI and several community organizations that are involved in computer science. So one of the things that the team felt was really important in terms of giving this information to the classroom teachers is that computer science is, you know, not just about computation. It's not just about cybersecurity. It's really about digital literacy and making sure that our students are responsible citizens in using the technology. So for those of you who don't know, this year, we went to a full one-to-one at the high school, and we went one-to-one at Thompson within the school day. So one of the things that we wanted to make sure is that we are creating computer science opportunities for all our students, but also supporting the teachers in integrating the computer science in their classroom. The -- we created a vision statement to provide Newport students with a collaborative integrated computer science program that fosters persistence, agility, problem-solving, creativity, power, and agency. One of the things that was right about creating this vision statement is that we did this collaboratively with parents and with community members, as well as our computer science team. The -- one of the things in our meetings with the people from the state, talking about the number of computer science positions that are available to our students when they graduate. And one of the things that we keep hearing around the state is, we have jobs out there. We need to make sure that we're preparing our students when they graduate from our high schools. So you can see that right now, hoping in Rhode Island, we have over 1,000 jobs available. We have employers looking for tech hires, over 258 positions. And 76% of all middle skill jobs are going to require a pretty significant expertise around -- So the goal is to create a clear and cohesive computer science pathway for the elementary levels through graduation. One of the great things about having this opportunity for the vertical conversation K-12 is that we are also very sensitive about the number of hours of screen time for our younger students. So that we took into consideration when we were designing our plan. The great thing, though, is, and Brianna's in the audience, is to -- Brianna is one of our teachers at the middle school and was instrumental in writing the plan, was learning about the amount of opportunities that the students have at Pell with the technology program that we have here, as well as the STEM program, and then how that transitions over at Thompson over the past couple of years. What we have found, though, is now that Thompson has created a technology pathway, that our high school teachers really need to prepare and make some changes to their computer science essential class. Because basically, our 8th graders could test out and not even have to take that course when they enter the high school. So that would give them a lot more flexibility in taking some of the other computer science programs. The other piece that we felt was really important, since this year we weren't able to get into our budget, was the tech integration specialists. That's one of the things that the computer science team and I have gone around the state and looked at other communities that have really done some fabulous work on integrating technology and the curriculum in the classroom, so that the technology integration person is someone that's tech savvy, but also has that background in curriculum. So what we did this year at all three schools is we designed a tech integration request form, and our tech leads at all three schools will be available to support teachers either during Common Clanning time, our early release days, and some one-on-one time on any special units that they want to work on. So this is definitely a work in progress, but it's something that we were trying to be creative with this year, where we knew we didn't have the money to hire the tech integrationists. So this is just a piece of the plan. This is just a very broad overview. Like I said, the schools are presenting a similar presentation, but more geared towards, you know, what are the science courses, computer science courses that are being offered at the elementary, the middle, and the level specific to their schools?
Are there any questions for Dr. Bean? Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is five -- it's for public comment. This is a section in the meeting where there's -- any person can speak regarding it. Any item that is not on the agenda for this evening, you'll be allowed three minutes to give us your thoughts. And is there anybody signed up for public comment, Mrs. Nash? Okay, all on agenda items. Okay, very good. We'll move right along to number six, action items.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leary.
If I could make a motion to amend agenda, please. I'd like to move 6.9, Discussion, Action on Private School Transportation, Private Parochial Mike Situation, to 6.1 in essence to the parents and students that are here.
Ahead of 6.1, is there a second?
Second.
Motion being made, second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, first item in the action items will be item 6.9, Discussion, Action on Private School Transportation.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, you know, I have an agenda before I make the motion. I'd like to refer it to the -- any public comment in the public out there, see what they have to say.
Could we -- okay. I don't know if the superintendent has any, it was her item, but um --
That's my item.
No, no, Mr. Leary, it was my item.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't realize that, Mr. Leary, sorry.
Okay. Sure. So as you are aware, during the summer, we had discussions about changing the routing system for our private school and parochial school students. And we had meetings and discussions over the summer. We also shared our comments and notes with the building principals from these buildings, as well as parochial and private schools. We started off the school year with depots, bus depots, for students that attended the private and parochial schools. We heard immediately from families and concerns about safety, and they didn't feel they were appropriate for their students as far as safety-wise. And also, they felt that they wanted a different type of pickup and delivery service for their students and children on the way home. So working in collaboration with them, we did sit down. And I have to say, the parents put in a lot of time and effort, and they had some great ideas as far as how to execute this so that we could work in a more collaborative way and pick up students from our private and parochial schools in locations closer to their homes and that were safer. In -- excuse me, in adding these stops, what happened was it created a timing as far as creating the students not getting to school on time. So when we had the depots, they weren't getting to school on time, but in an effort to work with the families, adding the additional stops, children were not getting to school on time. So working with Mr. Alves and the bus company, we continued to review and look at what we could do in order to provide the services so that students could arrive to school on time without adding additional buses. I will put that in as well. So we looked into that, and just recently, really recently, over the past week, we finally looked at our students that are riding at the elementary level in -- on the Pell elementary schools. And we looked specifically at schools that were in the north and south section of town to see if we could do two things. One, alleviate the extremely early times the private and parochial students were going to have to get picked up in order to arrive to school on time. And the second part was to try to alleviate their time spent on the bus. So just literally this morning, we implemented where buses one and two picked up, that transport our Pell students, also picked up some private and parochial school students this morning. One bus arrived on time, the other bus did not. It was about five to 10 minutes late. So I have been in discussions with Mr. Alves today regarding this. We -- it is the first day, and usually when we start bus routing, sometimes it takes a few times before you can get the kinks out. But long story short, we do have a resolution. If in the way we're doing it now does not work to get the children on time, we have a Plan B, so that students will just go to either All Saints or St. Phil's. Presently, what happens is when buses one and two arrive at Pell Elementary School, one bus of students that are on the bus from private or parochial schools goes to the other bus, and that bus, I think it's bus two now, drives to All Saints, and then from there, they go to St. Phil's and drop off the students. Our discussions this morning, actually late this afternoon when we were reviewing times, we're going to try that a couple of more times. If that's not successful, then what we would do is we would have, when the children arrive at Pell on bus one and two, one bus would be designated just to go to All Saints, and this other bus would be designated just to go to St. Phil's. Because the St. Phil's children are going to All Saints, and then they're in Middletown, then they're going out to Portsmouth. So that is what is happening in the morning. In the afternoon, for those of you that are not aware of the pickup schedule, in the afternoon, the buses start at St. Phil's, and they pick up the St. Phil's children first, then they go over to Penfield. Both schools get out at 3:00. So the Penfield students wait for the St. Phil's bus to come over to pick up them. And then on the way home, St. Phil's and Penfield students are then delivered to neighborhood stops or stops closer to their homes. In the afternoon, All Saints, bus 12 that comes from Thompson goes out to All Saints. They pick up the All Saints children, and then the All Saints children are then delivered to their homes. I want to say, I know we have parents here today. I want to thank them again for their help. I appreciate all their help and their input. I know it's been very challenging for them, and it is. We're going into week five of school, and we're just getting this resolved. I will say, for our public schools, working with the bus company as well, we're fine-tuning those bus routes as well. And just as recently as last week, we were making adjustments to some of our public school routes as well to help accommodate families that were having either pickup or AM or PM challenges. But I know they're here this evening, and I encourage them to share their concerns with us as well. So thank you.
All right, so I think we'll just let anybody from the public that would like to speak on it, you just have to step up to the podium, give us your name and address, and let us know your thoughts or your questions for the superintendent, so.
Mr. Chairman, while they're deciding, I sent everybody timelines, everybody got that by email. Everybody was sent?
No.
Nobody on it?
Nope. I didn't get anything from you.
I sent it through, like, send it through. Email.
Email?
Email.
Oh, I can't get on that.
Sent all the email, I wanted to, but last couple of times.
What time?
Actually, about more than one day. You know, tell you right here, 4:40, all school community, six people, and it goes back to days in the past, too. So I'm not using Google, I'm using your --
If you sent something today at 4:40, I can tell you.
No, I said the week, even week ago, same thing, the schedule, all the stuff.
I haven't gotten anything from you in a long time, so there's nothing here. Nope, I'm on it right now.
Send it, they got them, look at, send them all down.
All right.
All six people.
This text.
So we'll --
On your phone, on your phone, yeah.
It's a text, that's all.
On your phone, sorry. You're right, thank you, my phone.
Text.
My phone.
Okay.
My fault, sorry.
Thanks. We'll let -- if you could, you may just have to pull that microphone down so we can -- I think it --
The bench down, yeah.
Oh, there you go.
I'll go my tippy toes. I apologize if some of this was addressed, but I'm just going to read what I wrote out just to tell my -- our family's experiences with the bus, the buses.
If you could just give us your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Ann Bohan, and I'm a parent of a 6th grader at St. Philomena School. I live on Harrison Ave. in Newport. And I wanted to comment tonight on the bus service, Durham Bus Service, for Newport students attending St. Philomena School. I began email correspondence last year with Ms. Jermaine and the bus company, as my daughter Lily's bus was routinely late, and on many occasions, she was not arriving home until almost 5:00 PM. And the school gets out at 3:00. And it was late frequently, so it was frequent that she was getting home at 5:00 o'clock at night. Last spring, I expressed concern with, through emails with the bus company and Ms. Jermaine, because I knew a lot of more children were going to be coming to St. Phil's this academic year from Newport, and I wanted to get ahead of it. I didn't want the problem to get worse. And in September this year, it did get substantially worse, as I'm sure everyone has been talking about. Lily's bus stop started at .9 miles from her house and was not safe to walk to. And further, the bus ride to school was an hour and 15 minutes in the morning and an hour and a half on the way home. So many parents have expressed concerns and have been working with Ms. Jermaine. And today, a lot more stops were added, and thank you, so progress is being made. But my daughter Lily's ride each way to school is still an hour and a half roughly. So she's on the bus three hours a day when she takes the bus. Further, she's a type 1 diabetic, and I'm very concerned about having a low on the bus and not being able to reach her, as she often does not hear me when I call her on her phone. If it's noisy on the bus, I've had times where I've tried to reach her, and she doesn't hear her phone, doesn't answer. So I'm very concerned about an hour and a half on the way home, her not being able to reach her. So I asked that the school bus service from Newport to St. Philomena provides all the St. Phil's students safe, walkable bus stops and a bus ride that's a reasonable length of time. And that gets them to school on time. And a dedicated St. Philomena bus may be the only way to accomplish this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Page. I live at 25 Calendar Avenue, and I am a parent of a 7th grader at St. Philomena School. And I, too, have had several issues with the school bus stops this year. They've been changed three times. The most recent was actually Sunday evening. I just got the new schedule, so it left me very little time to coordinate my own life and getting my kids out to school and work, et cetera. My daughter, within the last three weeks, has been late nine times. The bus last Thursday, most recently, was late 33 minutes to the bus stop, right on Broadway. And she is habitually late to school, so there's no transition period for her, as you can imagine. Coming into school and then just going right to her class. She doesn't have time to go to her lockers, and she's missing homeroom. So when you think about how much time that is, every single day being late, it certainly adds up per week. So I'm respectfully requesting that our children be afforded timely transportation to St. Philomena's. Yes, more bus stops have been added, but now the length of the time for her on the bus each way, even with this new stop, she is on the bus 1 hour and 6 minutes in the morning, and then she's on the bus 1 hour and 8 minutes in the morning. And it was late again yet today. The other issue is that the bus driver doesn't allow her to use her cellphone on the bus. So therefore, I don't know where she is in the afternoon on these bus stops that are this long. So I appreciate us being able to speak to you tonight, but it still hasn't been quite resolved.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
One question is, is not, is the bus tracker not working?
The bus tracker does work, so anyone can be on the app. Also, what bus number, do you know?
She is 12.
12, thank you.
So there is a bus tracking system, and you're saying it doesn't work, or you're not?
I don't know anything about the bus tracking system, but it doesn't even matter. The point is, is that my daughter is not able to communicate with me on the bus, because her bus driver doesn't allow cellphones to be used. So when the bus is late, I don't know, and I'm sitting there waiting for her. So either way, she's on the bus for over an hour, she's in 7th grade, and should be eligible to at least have a few minutes in the morning to put her books rightfully in her locker and to come home at a decent hour in the afternoon.
And then my second question is, how many St. Phil's students are there that live in Newport?
I think that our next person --
55? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. That's almost a bus, so we're --
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christine Hendrickson. I live at 26 Dixon Street in Newport. First, I would like to address the bus tracker. The app was working about, I think, two years ago. It may be working now, however, no parent has gotten the email with the code for their student. Last year, when John Rivers was the head of Durham Bus Services, I emailed him repeatedly, saying that the bus tracker was not usable because we didn't have the student codes, and they were never sent around. So if you can help with those student codes, I'm sure the majority of parents would love to try to get the bus tracker. It's on my phone. I did download it, but I never had the codes. It's on my phone, I did download it, but I never had the codes sent to me upon request from previous years. I did not see any email come around this year from the new person as well, saying what the student codes were, or to even tell new families that the bus tracker was an option. So anyone who's new to St. Philomenas would not know about the bus tracker. So just to clarify that for you. And then I do want to say that I recognize all the work that has definitely been put into this. For me, this morning, I was not on the email that notified everyone of the new change, so I had absolutely no idea. That's no one's fault, it was just a miscommunication. However, I was standing at my normal bus stop where I speak to Pell families every day because the St. Philomenas bus has been late, so we were normally chatting with St. Philomena families, and I had absolutely no idea that my child was supposed to get on their bus. So I thought that we missed our bus and I ended up driving him to Portsmouth. Again, I understand it's a new schedule, but if we're implementing something late on a Friday evening, we need to make sure that it starts a little bit before Monday, even for that word of mouth. I was texting friends to say, "Where is the bus? Is it late?" That's when I found out there was a new schedule and I was trying to scroll through and find out where our stops were. I tried to catch the bus at Pell, but I can't do drop off for my younger daughter at daycare and then get to Pell in the amount of time that it was required, so I ended up driving to Portsmouth. Again, one day, not a problem, but let's work on that so it doesn't happen again. And then finally, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that the bus has actually been late almost every day, not just the last couple of weeks. My son is the last person to arrive in his class, he's in third grade. And what's been extremely difficult for him, as well as for several other families with children who have time on task issues, whether ADD or executive function disorder, is they need that time in the morning to go through their tasks list and prepare to make sure that they start their day on time. So if he's arriving 10, 15 minutes late, and this is a new issue for him, it's really a challenge for him to get ready and to get settled when he's already the last one in class. So I don't like to single students out, but I know that several other families are having these issues as well. So anything that we can do to try to speed up the process and make sure that these students are getting there on time would be extremely helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd first like to say thank you to the superintendent, who I am personally one of the people who has been working directly with her on this, on these issues. She has been, she has listened, she has put forth as much energy as her busy schedule can probably allow. However, as you see, we're actually into our sixth week of school, not the fifth, on our third iteration of bussing. And to be honest, the most recent is a Band-Aid fix. Yes, children did get to school, but again, they were not on time today. But before I get into this further, I'm concerned about something that was promised to us that I do not see on the agenda, which was Mr. Gomes, that the motion to not provide bussing on days when public school was not in session was to be rescinded in today's meeting and it is not on the document.
No, it is, that's why I put this on as well.
So you're going to put it in?
Yes, yes.
Because it just wasn't in writing, so I wanted to make sure, because that's super important.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's on for tonight.
So, I mean, I want to start by saying, last year's bus was fine for us. I might as go as far as saying our bus was great. We had good stops, our kids got to school on time, everyone was happy. And it was Penfield that was late to school. With a ridership of less than 10 children, everything got blown up for that. So we went from completely happy families with safe stops, school on time, all of that for another school. I'm not mad at Penfield, it's not their fault, it's just a, there's a failing in the system. We have higher ridership and how, this year, the way the schedules worked out, Penfield got their own bus and we're messing around on the sixth week of school with a three-bus scenario. So to correct what the superintendent said, we don't have two buses in the morning. Bus one and bus two, let's be clear, bus one goes out on the drive in Harrison and meets at Pell. Bus two does the Fifth Ward and a little bit of Yachting Village. They meet at Pell, there's a switch when goes. We also have bus 12. Bus 12 does part of Historic Hill, goes down into the Point, and then does all of Broadway and then goes out and does, you know, out by the base, stops at All Saints, and then continues on. So, all of this is happening, we now have three buses to get our kids to school because the hierarchy is messed up. We're taxpayers, whether you're a public or a private, we should have the same access to bussing. It's not the case. Public school was given a priority, which is how we've ended up in this mess. Our current solution requiring three buses, we have 53, 55 kids who go to St. Phil's, 33 of which we know are full-time riders, with 13 to 15 who are occasional riders depending on after-school activities. I know this because every single parent at St. Phil's is so involved that we have a spreadsheet. I know exactly where they live, when they ride the bus, morning and afternoon. We went as far to, and I think Mr. Leary forwarded it to you and there may have been confusion, and spent the time to build for the superintendent and Mr. Alves, an entire map of where every single person lives so that there is absolutely no confusion, color-coded by grade and distance which is acceptable to walk to a bus stop. We included maps of the original depots, our proposed stops, and where the new stops would be and where the shortcomings might fall. With the addition to this, we still ended up with less stops than last year's bus route, which was a success, and a longer bus ride. Something's wrong. In addition to that, overall, parents are just uncomfortable with this new system, especially with the little ones. The bussing switching today was better, everyone was still late. But I got multiple phone calls and emails from parents, who especially kindergarteners, their parents are not comfortable with a five-year-old having to switch a bus without their parent around. It's unnerving. Riding a bus as a five-year-old is already a little bit of a nervous thing. You're a kindergartner, it's your first time to school on a bus, and now you're switching schools. And speaking from experience, two years ago, when the bus switching happened, my then five-year-old got into a very large accident switching buses with a lot of injuries at the Pell school. So I know for a fact that it's not completely safe. And when buses sit in wait, the monitors let them off and they run around and they get hurt, and it happens. So we need to consider a long-term solution outside of this. I'm not saying we're switching again, we don't need a fourth bus schedule tomorrow, but we have to think about this more holistically and more of a big picture. You know, in my own experience, they abandoned this, dropping the students off for a reason. Durham isn't paying attention to the details. The most recent schedule was approved by the superintendent in Durham with a 30-minute discrepancy. On Friday, I received an email that had the news, two schedules attached, saying these are approved from Mrs. Nash. I quickly responded saying, "I'm not sure this should go into effect Monday, we have a meeting, I think we should talk about it." I was told it was going to affect anyway. I reviewed the schedules and immediately found that it had been approved with a 30-minute discrepancy. Mr. Alves then responded two hours later, "Oh, you're right, there was a technical glitch, the whole schedule's 30 minutes off." The schedule was published. Had I, as a parent, not seen it, it would have been published and all of the parents at St. Philomena School today would have been 30 minutes off their child's drop-off time. That's the first thing. Second, scenario two, where we're told the buses were late all the time because we added stops, that's not why the buses were late. The buses, bus was late in scenario two for one specific reason. Bus 12 is allocated to be at Thompson Middle School at 7:30 in the morning. Interestingly enough, with our new scenario, bus 12 was also allocated to be at Carroll Avenue at 7:26 AM. We were set up to fail. The same bus was approved to pick our students up, out basically, almost on the drive, when it was still at Thompson. No wonder why our kids are late to school every day. And let's not forget that we had four families who didn't have a bus stop because they were told, "There's not enough time to get your kids." No, there wasn't enough time to put a stop on there because the bus was at Thompson. You don't give us a fair shot. We're still fighting for our kids because everything we've asked for has been fair and reasonable, but there are not enough buses. We had said, "Well, maybe use a Rogers High School bus," because that bus drops off at 7:15 out on the drive. And you could start the route on time, one bus, all the way, all of our kids, one thing, all the way out, you don't have to add a new bus to the system. And Mr. Alves said to me, "I'm sorry, that is not possible because we have a policy of having the same driver and the same monitor together." But they already broke that rule, because we've always had multiple buses this year. So the policy doesn't apply to private schools? That doesn't make any sense. The town of Coventry, Rhode Island, is actively trying to get out of their contract with Durham because of poor service, and we're looking to stay with them. There's poor record-keeping and they have no record of bus two scheduled from last year. Actually, one of our parents, Ms. Hendrickson, is the one who procured it. So all of a sudden, they had everyone's schedule last year, but when we said, "Oh, our schedule was great last year," they had no record of our schedule, but every other public school bus. Doesn't make any sense. In addition, a current morning driver, Ms. Lisa, was removed from our route last year after being verbally inappropriate to both a parent and students. She was taken off the route and written up. It made a large difference, we got a great driver on the students on the bus. This year, miraculously, she's back on our route. And when a parent called this concern, in, the bus company said, "I'm sorry, we have no record of previous altercations with this driver." In addition, the same driver reportedly left a student at a non-designated stop one day this September, and then reported, and then later lambasted that same student after his, he told his guardian about it and it got back to her. She uses profanities, there are five-year-olds on this bus. Durham has the responsibility to live up to their registered trademark, getting students to school safely, on time, and ready to learn. Many of us feel that they are failing both the city of Newport and our students in this regard. And to quote from the Newport Public School homepage, "Even being late to school 10 minutes a day adds up to 50 minutes a week, equally nearly 1.5 weeks a year." This is Newport Public Schools' words, not mine. It's not acceptable. So our ask is that we continue to ensure that we can establish a route going forward that's both safe and reasonable in a time that arrives on time. We have yet to be on time, even in the depots. And ideally, with all of our students together. I know the budget is always an issue, it's going to come up, but consider reviewing the options of either using a Rogers High School bus, or as you're looking into these new contracts, budgeting for the fact that we currently have 55 students and it's, the Newport-St. Phil's population is growing. We're going to need our own bus. Or a way so that we can utilize a bus that goes to Rogers and then can be allocated to us in the afternoon, after that, that doesn't have to go to Thompson or Pell. We love where we live, but we're asking to be supported by the taxes that we pay. Like, it's not an unfair ask. Also noted in my own point, since I got an email from a parent today, that said her child was sent home with a note from her teacher that said, "Please drive your child to school, she is starting to fail tests and is affecting her schoolwork." And no parent should be asked to do that. So I have documentation of everything that's happened, all three sets of bus routes, I have every change that's happened, the discrepancy in the bussing and the fact that there was an approval of a bus route that started four minutes prior when a bus was allocated somewhere else. I don't, I'm not angry at the superintendent or at the bus company, and I understand that everyone does their best, but we shouldn't have to fight so hard to get our kids to school safe, on time, and in a reasonable amount of time. So, I think that that's, I mean, if you, if anyone wants any of the documentation or anything, I can leave it with Mr. Leary. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask, do you have a copy of all that documentation? Could you leave it with Mrs. Nash? It would be, that way we know she'll get it out to everybody and...
So what, the email that you got from Mr. Leary was almost all of this, except for my notes that I wrote tonight? I don't know what happened to it, but he wants to share it.
I, I haven't seen anything that has all that information.
That's my fault, I used my phone as, you got it, you text now.
Yeah, I mean, I highlighted all of it.
No, that's, I mean, I don't, I'm just saying that I haven't seen it and I can't, we'll get it, that's why, we'll get it through Kathy.
We can scan those, we can scan all those and then send them out to everyone.
I don't know if, I, I agree with your sentiment though, that your children should be getting to school on time and that we're failing them in that regard. I don't know if the superintendent has anything to add to the comments or...
No, I think Ms. Sandman, Ms. Sandman and Ms. Olivera, I met with Ms. Sandman and Ms. Olivera, and I did even say to them, they have a network that's unbelievable as far as their maps, their data, all the information they have. They have everything that we needed. We do have difficulty with the runs and the tiered bus system we have, how tight it is, and to get people on time. The afternoon, the most recent one that was approved in the morning on Friday, in between things, on Friday, I did approve that. I was looking at my hard copy, not the online copy, and when I sent out, I said, "No, there isn't any difference in the afternoon." Then when I did see it, Ms. Olivera brought it to my attention, but Mr. Alves had seen that, so he did correct that. We did try to, for notification purposes, we tried to get everything out on Friday for everyone, and the messaging, I guess, didn't get to people and I apologize for that. And that's...
How about the bus tracker? Do we know?
The bus tracker, I think Mr. Alves is here, Mr. Francisco Montero is here as well, and I can, I think they can answer those questions for us. Yep.
You just, you just have to...
You have to speak.
Before, if you could go back, just, you can go back up to the podium before.
You can, yeah.
It just, that's why, so it's recording, that's all.
As I said to the superintendent in private, so it's just fair that everybody hears, and our principal's here and he can confirm this, we know our enrollment in May, is it, in May. So our bus can be determined within the 90 days, which is actually state law, that you're supposed to provide prior to the, the school year. That's actually state law, 90 days ahead of school, your bus, your route is supposed to be given to the police chief. Not 10 days, not three days, however. That's actually law. We can fit within that because our ridership is determined in May. So...
Well, that'll be a question for Mr. Tyson.
Right, but so I'm saying, if you, if we look forward at budgeting and bussing, we know exactly what we have in May.
I agree, I have a question that may answer that.
Okay.
Just wait for...
Good evening. So as far as...
I know who you are, could you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, my name is Tyson Alves and I'm the general manager for the Newport location of Durham. So the first question was the Durham Bus Tracker app. St. Phil's does not have a ID system for each of their students, so what we've been doing is any St. Phil's families that have called in and asked for that information, we've over the phone worked with those families to make sure that we have an ID that they can recognize as their own student. If we need to, moving forward, create a ID for each and every student and then forward that to Mr. Cudero, and he can then disperse that to the families, we can do that within the next day or so, easily. And then to the fact of, yes, the buses have been late over the last few weeks, and again, this morning they were definitely late, one of the buses. I'm keeping a very close eye on it. I am speaking with the drivers and the monitors daily to find out why it's happening, what's going on. As they said, they provided you with all that information. They have done a wonderful job of keeping track of what students are on their buses and what they need done, and we are working with them and Ms. Jermaine to make sure that they are getting the best service that they deserve. And again, there is definitely improvements. I see that within the next week or so, we should have all of the issues that are causing that one additional bus being late to St. Phil's. So no one should be late by the end of this week is our hope.
Mr. Alves, could you share the ridership? Because that's something, I know you and I go back and forth and I'm always asking you about that.
So the, the list that we were provided is a list of all Newport residents that go to St. Phil's, not just the ridership ones. And what that does is, when we're putting that into our system, we have to accommodate all of those students, putting them on a bus. And each student adds time to the actual route, so that is causing some of the route times to not be as accurate as they could potentially be. What we're hoping is, now with the changes that we have, we'll be able to have more accurate ridership counts and more accurate ridership attendance, so that we, we can correct our list and removing any of the students that are not actually going to be using the list, I'm sorry, not using the bus within the next couple of weeks.
And I have a question to that point. When do you provide that list?
We were, we received that during the summertime when we were working on the routes. We requested from all three of the private schools what they had for riderships. And the list that was provided to us from St. Phil's was, again, of all Newport residents, not just their riders.
But I know I said in a meeting in July and you had not received the ridership list from St. Phil's at that time.
That is correct.
And that was in July?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was a point that was brought up, that 90 days ahead of, Mrs. Neary, I'll get down there and meet Mr. Leary. Mrs. Neary?
Could I have a clarification on, I believe it was what Mrs. Sandman said about the inability to use the Rogers bus? Could you, can you expand on that and explain that?
So, yes, that conversation that I had with Ms. Sandman, I did not state it was policy. I did say it's usually not recommended. We'd like to keep the same driver and monitor on the same route. Ideally, in the beginning, when we, before we even released, or even the first day of school, we had the same monitor, same driver for both morning and afternoon. The Penfield and St. Phil's bus was going to be bus 13 both morning and afternoon. But because of the early drop-off time at St. Phil's, that a lot of the St. Phil's family were not happy about having to put their students on the bus so early, Colleen came up with the suggestion of putting them with the All Saints students in the morning, which had a much closer bell time, which we did believe would solve a lot of their concerns with getting their children to school at a more appropriate time as opposed to as early as initially, I think we were dropping them off, suggested dropping them off at about 8:15, because St., Penfield is a 7:55 school. We were going to drop them off, Penfield had set somewhere between 7:30 and 8 o'clock, so we put it to right in the middle, 7:45, dropping off at Penfield. And then, that would give them about a 20, 25-minute drive from Penfield over to St. Phil's, dropping them off at about 8:15-ish was our initial start. But again, once we switched it to the All Saints bus, it still seemed like it was going to be able to work. At the time, when we were doing the depot stops, the bus was arriving into the St. Phil's area at approximately 8:40, and then dropping off at the various stops at St. Phil's. Once we added the more stops, once again, as they did state, we knew that it was going to be a concern.
I'm sorry. I'm still confused. I don't, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
That does not explain to me what Ms. Sandman said about not the inability to use the Rogers bus. I understand all these iterations you've mentioned. I don't, I...
So, again, we never said we could...
What time does the Rogers bus start?
So, the buses are dropping off at Rogers at approximately 7:15.
So, I believe the request is for that bus, whatever that bus is, to then, that same bus, to drive the private parochial, is that, is that not possible?
It is not impossible. It is possible. But again, that would require us shifting times for the Pell students. And that's when I had talked to Ms. Sandman, I did tell her, we didn't want to make any major changes that would affect moving the problem from one school to another.
Larger school, more students, okay. That's the part I wasn't...
Sorry about that.
That's, like, I don't...
It doesn't make full sense, because our bus is done at Thompson at 7:30.
Wait, that's a different, yeah.
I'm just gonna ask you, just have to go to the podium if you, that's all. I mean, if you, no, you're okay. That's fine if it's limited, but...
Yeah, it just, it doesn't, the thing doesn't make sense. So, bus 12 is done at Thompson at 7:30, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, you don't want to reallocate a bus from Rogers, but we need a bus that starts around 7:15. Hear me out. But you don't want to mess up Pell, but why can't 12 just go to Pell?
And, and once again, we said...
That doesn't mess up Pell's schedule at all.
We could potentially do that. It might, again, it would just be a change that would have to be implemented. And we didn't want to shift the problem from one bus to another. So, it wasn't something that we ignored. We did discuss it. It would just be shifting possibly one bus from being late for St. Phil's to being a bus that become late to Pell.
Or too early. Or actually, too early to Pell. And because it isn't a private school, the doors are actually not open here until 8:15. They're simply not open.
But that bus wouldn't be allocated afterwards. So, if it had to wait 15 minutes before it started its route, it could, because it doesn't have anywhere to be until, it could wait to start the Pell route on time.
Depends where it starts from. Because if it's starting from, if it's starting from the fifth ward...
It could pick which route it replaced on time, because I just, I just don't think every, all the avenues were explored. I think we got a three-bus option that started this morning without exploring the avenue that mathematically made the most sense, because Ms. Olivera was not here, and I pulled every single bus schedule on a table and mapped them all out to figure out if it was feasible.
Mr. Neary?
Mr. Leary?
I have three questions, Ms. Tyson. First of all, is there one bus strictly for parochial schools? Bus 12?
No, there are actually two buses for the parochial schools.
Bus 12 Phil's?
Bus 12 in the morning does All Saints, well, does Thompson first, then it does All Saints and St. Phil's combined. In the afternoon, it does Thompson, then it goes to All Saints.
So, could bus 12 be used to pick them, all the parochial kids up?
I do not believe that there's enough room. Again, with the current data that we have for ridership, there's not enough room for one bus to do all three.
Okay. Second, we have a contract with you. I know she corrected that up, Ms. Neary with you. We don't, nothing in our contract says you can't switch driver and monitor.
That is correct.
So, I know where the miswording came in, but make sure it's clear going forward. We have a contract, you follow the contract.
Correct. And again, we did not...
Thank you. Next thing, ridership accounts right now are down, because all these parents are getting frustrated in driving the kids to school. So, the 55 they're talking about might be down to 20 now, because we put them in that situation. Now, we gotta get them back. It's obvious possibility to get them back, and yours to get it done.
That is absolutely correct. And we've been working very hard with Ms. Jermaine to make sure that that happens.
Thank you. So, I'm gonna make a motion eventually, and it's gonna apply to both of yous, to get this damn thing done right for these parents. It's the only thing to get done. This is, it's a shame we're doing this to these kids. It's a shame.
Again, I take this very seriously. I am a father myself, so I understand how important it is to make sure that our kids are getting what they deserve. So, we have been working very hard to make sure that this solution gets solved. And as I said, I'm very hopeful that within the next few days, this will work out, that we are making sure that these students are getting to school on time.
Thank you.
But can you add to it that next year, we don't have a three-bus solution? Like, if this is the bandaid for now?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna get to next year. We gotta get this year done first.
So, Mrs. Neary?
Mr. Alves, what is the overall ridership, not private parochial, but private parochial and public? What is the overall ridership that you are dealing with? I just, I just want us to get a sense of scale.
I don't know that off the top of my head, if I was going to give a rough estimate. Probably somewhere in the 1,800 to 2,000 students that are actually riding the bus.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a big number. I just, I just wanted to know for scale what we're talking about.
Well, plus the overall just private number.
Again, at this point, it's not really accurate, because as Mr. Leary had mentioned, some parents are still transporting their students themselves. So, we don't have accurate data. If the high number would be approximately 100.
Okay. So, so you'd say about 1,700 public and about 100 high, private parochial?
Okay, approximately.
Thank you.
My bigger question is... Could you just step, just have to step up and I...
Otherwise, we're here on TV. We can watch some FaceTime, Mr. Page. He's a FaceTime.
My question to you is...
Mike, I know he's just...
Oh, sorry. My name is Michael Page. I live on 25 Calendar Avenue. My daughter goes to St. Philamena's. I don't understand how we have the same bus driver that was known for bullying kids. So, literally, perfect bus driver, monitor, everything last year, but then this year, we're right back with her, and she gave my wife an attitude that was not called for, when all she had to do was tell us that a kid got sick on the bus, she had to clean it, that's why she was 10 minutes late. But she was so rude that she just shut the door, drove off. So, I mean, you know, my daughter's going to school first thing in the morning, that's not called for anything.
So, to that comment, as the committee is aware and Ms. Jermaine is aware, I only started here within the past few months. I did not have any record of anything happening previously with this driver. What happened with the, because again, it wasn't just the private schools that got adjusted, it was all the public schools got adjusted. Since there were such drastic route changes, we have a CBA, collective bargaining agreement, with our employees as well. So, those employees had an obligation that had to be met. With that being said, they chose to rebid on all of their routes. So, every single one of the drivers, from the top of seniority to the bottom, including the monitors, had a choice of what route they were on. And initially, the driver that is in question did pick a All Saints run with Thompson, is what her expectation was. When the St. Phil's got added to her, there was no mention or anything from either any party or any individual that there was a concern here with her being on a St. Phil's run. Since then, there have been, again, there was the initial concern about her dropping her off at an unapproved stop, which was addressed with her, and she understands that from now on, she doesn't do that. She thought that she was doing that individual a service. In this situation, the driver was very stressed out. I do not excuse her actions, and she has been talked to and reprimanded since. But we are continuing to give her the, the training that she deserves to make her a good bus driver. And again, if, if you have any concerns in the future, feel free to give us a call at our office. We are more than happy to discuss any issues that we're having, that the parents are having with them. And then, again, we will speak with that individual, that driver, that monitor, to make sure that they are doing the things that they should be doing.
Do you even HR file on your drivers?
So, we do. And again, there was no record of that. And the previous manager may or may not have had the discussion with that individual and resolved it.
Forcibly removed.
So, once again, and that was not documented from what we could see.
Mrs. Neary?
Could I ask a question about that? Not that, not the specific case, but what is, what is your procedure for record-keeping and for keeping things that have happened in the past? Because there's certainly this issue, but I'm also hearing about not having the routes from the prior year, which was, so, I'm a little bit concerned, I have to be honest, simply in terms of record-keeping and not having to repeat conversations, because we all, whether public, private, or parochial, will find ourselves in a situation where something's been brought up to you, to your team, and nobody has a record of it. So, I let, I, I'm not understanding where that information is going, where is it being held? Why, why can we not re-access it if we need it?
So, as far as the, whenever we do a coaching or a discussion with a driver, that does get documented. It goes into their personnel file. That is the company's policy. When I've come from other locations, that's always been what I've done. Coming to this location, I am not sure as to the reason why some of these things were not where they should have been. But again, as I said in the past, I'm making sure going forward that I'm doing things the way that they should be done, and they are definitely getting documented. As far as the routes, I scoured through everything that I had in that office, in every single file cabinet, in every single box, to look for what was requested as the old routes. And again, I don't know why they weren't, there was a printout, but only a part of that printout was there. Not all of it was there together.
So, then my question, again, is, there's not, not much we can do about the past. My question is about moving forward. Where is the information being held, both on personal HR files and on routes? Is it held in a place that whoever moves, comes forward in five, 10, however many years you're here, that that information is findable? What is the moving forward?
So, moving forward, again, everything is put into there, a hard copy is placed into each individual's personnel file. And then, in addition to that, we also have a uploading system that is from the company's side, that we can upload files that need to be saved, so that regardless of who comes in, if the building catches on fire, there's still a record of it online.
Is it same for routes? Is that the same thing?
The routes, they should be there as well. Again, that comes down to making sure that the individual would be using it. I've put, made sure, everything that we've done, everything new and old that I have come across is in the system.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, Ken. Come on up. Again, my name is Amy Page. I have last year's...
If you need a copy of that?
I actually did receive it in an email.
You do have it?
Yes.
Okay, so that's to be put on file?
Yes, absolutely. That was, once I received them...
This was great. This worked awesome.
So, again, with that being said, those times are inaccurate to what was actually happening last year. I have, when Ms. Sandman had sent those to me, I did save them. Both I have a digital copy and a physical copy of them. But I checked those. I, we have a GPS tracking unit that lets us know where the bus has been passed. So, I compared those to what was actually happening throughout the month of May of last year with the previous driver, and none of his times actually matched, with the exception of maybe the first stop, starting at St. Phil's and then leaving St. Phil's. That's the only thing that actually matched. So, I question...
Zero problems last year.
And I, I understand that, and I definitely do, that just the times were inaccurate.
In the afternoon or in the morning?
Both, for the mornings and the afternoons, the times that were presented to me in that document and what was actually happening with the bus were not the same. But, once again, as I did say, we did start with pretty much the same thing. I did not have the old routes. But what our system does is it shows us where every single student lives. And what we did is find areas that, similar to what you did last year, was depot stops, not per se depot stops, but stops in each neighborhood. And we ended up not having enough time for that to work. So, with the advice that was given to us, we ended up making the depot stops.
So, I just think that it's important for the committee to understand, the very first route that was presented to us, when it was spoken about how particularly the St. Philamena's parents challenged the beginning time, which would have put our students well on time, well before the 8:45 start. The reason that some of us challenged that time is that our children were actually going to be on the bus before 7:00 AM. The original pickup time for my son, the first proposed time, was at 6:50 AM. And that was why we challenged the timing, because he would have been picked up before 7:00. 7:30 pickup time, 7:15 pickup time, still early, but willing and more understandable, given that there's a half-hour ride to Portsmouth. But 6:50 was not an acceptable time from, from what we saw. So, I just wanted to make sure that you fully understood that, that it wasn't us just trying to look for the perfect scenario to fit our schedules. So, thank you.
My name is Brian. I'm a principal at St. Philamena School, and I live in Warwick, Rhode Island, so I'm on 70 Silver Lake. So, I wanted to just start, I wanted to commend Colleen. I think the superintendent has a tremendous amount of work to do in Newport, and she spent a considerable amount of time on this. And I know many other superintendents delegate this to statewide transportation and other areas, and she has to be in the mix in it. And I commend you for that, because I think you've had your, your work cut out for you. For me, as an administrator, this has been a two-year event. Previous to that, we had, we had success last year because we accepted the children 45 minutes before the start of school time. So, typically arrived between 8:00 and 8:10 last year to accommodate a flexible bus schedule, which got the students there much earlier. I know, I learned tonight that Pell can't accept before 8:15. We rearranged our morning care program, so those parents could have that availability to them free of charge. And we're, we're continually trying to work with the public school district. This is the only public school district that we've had considerable challenges with, and it's trying to find, knowing that Newport and Portsmouth are the longest distance. So, I would really encourage you to take that into account as you look to the future. You'll always have the challenge of having to send kids to your farthest non-public school. And so, when you try to merge schools together, when you try to find bus routes that allow for multiple things to happen on it, you ultimately add on to a child's bus ride. I would also suggest that this year, we, was the first year we were told as a school that we were not to provide full Newport residency to the bus, Durham bus school. We had done that. I could send you email exchanges, and it was only learned through our conversations that we had in, in July, that Superintendent Jermaine brought together the non-public school principals to actually talk through some of our challenges that we discovered. We had been sending it fine in previous years. I think and suspect that the difference was, one more non-public school came into the routing, so it obviously changed now that we had to consider three non-public schools instead of just an All Saints, which had typically low ridership in St. Phil's. We have 55 students from Newport this year. About 41 confirmed that they'll be using the bus or have used the bus. I do reiterate that for our youngest families, students of the youngest families, kindergarten, they're very concerned about this. And at the end of the day, I have found that the families we work with just want a good, solid, quality education for their kids. And the non-public parents, the 55, the per pupil cost that you'd be spending on those students here in Newport, that parents are still paying after-tax dollars. The most important thing we can give them is a good, safe ride. But I also encourage you, hold the bus company responsible for how it employs monitors and it employs bus drivers. As a principal, it's my responsibility to uphold that what happens on the bus is the same that would happen in the school day. It is very hard to navigate at a school like ours, where we have very strict adherence to what we would expect out of our teachers, and how they speak to children, and how they work with children, that it's hard to hear from parents and from children in an area that I have very little control over. We had those years last year, Mr. Jermaine was very, those concerns last year, Mr. Jermaine was very proactive. And I will end by saying, I just think it's a considerable amount of time on the superintendent's lap to solve issues that could be easily solved. And you can see already, you have a dedicated team of public residents, non-public parents and residents here that are willing to work with you and to make this happen. But I think we've just begun a partnership, but we've gotta make sure we solve this and we set it up for success next year. And we're certainly willing to do it, but this was a year where we've really had too many challenges, right off the bat, to assure parents from Newport that this is gonna be a successful year. So, we've got a lot of earning back their trust to do. And I'm happy to answer any questions, yeah.
Mrs. Neary?
You said that we're the only Newport public schools? Our district is the only district with which you have this problem?
Right now, yeah.
How regularly?
Yeah.
How are you, yeah, how... How are you, yeah, how are your other students coming, getting to you?
They use statewide transportation. So the first issue that came on the docket last year that Mr. Germaine and I worked on was that Newport would have been the only school that didn't allow for bus transportation on days where you weren't in session and we were. It amounts to sometimes two to three days a school year. There's still half-days. Typically, that's not a problem, we still get picked up at our regular time, but all the others, because the Rhode Island Department of Education uses statewide transportation, what, speaking with those coordinators, they're very upfront that their service is to provide students' service on the days that their schools are in session. And it's in line with some of the Department of Rhode Island, Department of Ed jurisdictions that came out that I sent to Mr. Germaine that just shared. It's precedent that schools, non-public schools should be provided those services, those students should be provided those services. So it started with that. The second thing that came in is that when we work with, with our other school districts in the region that we are in, we acknowledge the fact that Little Compton's closer than Newport in some areas, and in some areas it's not, but we find that students are arriving at or before 8:45, and that we have had a very responsive experience when talking through statewide transportation with the coordinator at Ride. So any concerns that would come up about scheduling, things of that nature, have been addressed immediately. Here, you can tell, there's a lot of going back and forth up until a schedule even on Friday, and we had a fall fair on Saturday, and, and you know, if we don't have enough lead time, it's very tough to change schedules overnight.
And you may not know the answer to this. I certainly don't. It sounds like, well, I mean, you, you did say it, we, we are the only district with, with whom there is this problem, partly it's because we're using buses with our own, like, our contract as opposed to statewide transportation. Would you be opposed to statewide transportation for your students who live in Newport?
No.
I mean, I don't know how it works.
Yeah, no.
Just wondering. I mean, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, it's a cost that you would have to.
I don't know what the cost is.
Sure, I think, I just encourage, I think it's, it's the only superintendent that has such direct oversight. And it's a, as you can tell, it's a considerable amount of time, effort and energy, and, and she does it without complaining about it, but I'm sure that that's time, effort and energy you'd like her spending on other things for the students of Newport, but I commend her for that. But we do not have any other superintendent with the oversight of the district busing that, that Newport has, and we have had little to no problems.
And are your students coming from the, from the entire state, or is?
Just from the region, from the busing region. Outside of that, parents have to, and the region includes Little Compton, Newport, Portsmouth, Middletown.
So we?
I'm sorry? And Tip, and Tipton, sorry, I apologize.
So Newport has the most students, as a district, not?
Portsmouth has the most students coming to us.
Coming to you, but I mean, as a public school district. I think we might be the biggest one.
Portsmouth is the largest non-public student body that we have that's coming to us. So Newport has grown exponentially, it's about 20 students more this year than it was last year, coming from Newport to St. Phil's. And we saw the shift happen when Clooney School closed, that there was a larger percentage of students coming. And I appreciate your time and effort, I know there's, there's a lot going on, and I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make a motion, let's see what some other comments.
Mr. Leary.
So I would make a motion to direct the superintendent to get a schedule and prioritize a solution to get parochial school students to school in a timely transportation solution ASAP.
Second.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask a couple of things, clarifying your motion first, I think you need to include private schools, because it's not just the parochial schools.
Well, yeah.
So if you could do private schools, and I would prefer that there be a timeframe rather than ASP.
All right, well, in a timely transportation solution for them, I just want to get, you're already into week six, I don't want this to be next month, talk about this in November again here.
Okay, I'm just looking for a timeframe in your motion, Mr. Leary.
Okay, so just take out the ASAP.
What do you put in? Seven days, 10 days, just give some kind of direction so that we can achieve your motion.
Bus coming seven days, good?
Again, with our current system, I do believe that within the next two to three days, we should be, seven days is very generous.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion was to direct the superintendent to work with the bus company within seven days to work out the issues and get them all in order with the private schools.
To get a timely transportation solution.
Okay, timely transportation solution. Seconded by Mr. Bowlen. Any discussion on the motion? Dr. Flowers.
I respect Mr. Leary's effort to get this moving along. However, I think that the implication, and maybe this is unintended, the implication that the superintendent and central administration and the bus company have not been working on this, that, that's what I'm getting the feel from what your motion is, seems to me is redundant, because I, it's, it's pretty obvious, even listening to St. Phil's principals saying, you know, that the cooperation and all the effort that has been put into getting this whole problem solved, this has been going on since the first day of school practically.
August 27.
For myself, I don't see any need for this particular motion.
Need a solution, not the.
Okay, you're welcome to step up to, I'm just, I know, I just, for the record, I don't, I'm not being difficult, trust me. Everybody could speak as long as they'd like. Any other discussion on the motion?
I would like to.
I just want to say, I know there's been a lot of meetings and talks by the superintendent and by everybody, and I thank you all, first, for working with us, and number two, I think you all know that even with the 4% increase from the city, we are really at a max in our budget right now. So I think it's, I will say this, you know, we get, our cost per child is so high, we don't get to count the things that we were doing for public and parochial, private and parochial schools, but we are really trying to do our best. I know I've been on many of these phone calls and so on as well, at the meetings, and I think that the intent is to try to make it happen. I think if we could add another bus, I'm just gonna say, we would do it. We don't have the funds, it's the same thing that's happening within the schools. But I do think that we need to continue to do our best thing, and we need the bus company, basically, to really also look at, really look at this option she's suggesting, please, because it sounds like she's done some good work on it, and we need you to really deliver the students safely and timely, please.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
I'll say aye, because I want to get this moving, but.
Okay, so I'll try one more time. So anybody in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Hopefully we'll get it straight out.
Mr. Chair, the other, the reason this was put on the agenda for this evening was also I need you to rescind a vote you have already taken.
Okay, so.
To ensure that the private and parochial schools have transportation, when the Newport public schools do not have schools. That is a total of 11 days, and it comes to a total of $4,389.92.
Okay, so I just need some clarity from Mr. Galvin, if I could, in order for us to bring up a motion, needs to be brought up by somebody who voted against the motion, correct?
No, that's not my opinion. Unless there's been some reliance on a vote that you've taken on a particular topic, detrimental reliance, it can be entertained again as a new topic and dealt with. It's not a motion for reconsideration. Reconsideration is a technical approach or standard under Robert's rules, typically for the same meeting, sometimes for the meeting afterwards. When you, when you're dealing with a topic that someone wants to revisit, unless there's been reliance of some sort that is irretrievable, you can take it up again in the future.
Great. So the other part of this motion would be that we did take a vote some time ago, I believe it was in August possibly, to not provide transportation on the days that the Newport schools were not in, in school that day. There were several things that were brought to light after the vote that weren't known at the time, as you know, the days that were in question, you did get bus in the beginning. Superintendent and I worked with her and the bus company to make sure, I don't think all the facts are known. So I think there would be a motion in order to rescind the previous motion that we not provide transportation on the days when Newport public schools in service. Or you could present a motion that would say we would provide transportation on the days when Newport schools.
I think that's what we should, motion that we will, that we will provide it when the Newport public school is not in session.
Second, motion been made, and second, any discussion?
Mr. Jim, it's a good clip, Mr. Galvin, we're rescinding this first, am I correct?
No. You're executing a new motion.
Entailing a motion. So anybody, even though I voted against it, I could bring it back up?
You could.
Thank you.
Ms. Neary.
What information do we not have that we did not have when we voted the first time?
For, for me personally, I was under the understanding that we were being consistent with the other schools on the island that did this, subsequently finding out that we weren't, that Middletown and Portsmouth do transport on the days when we're in school. And I think for me personally, the second one was, I think it's about a cost of $3,500 for the year, if I'm not mistaken.
It's $4,389.92.
So the costs were not nearly as high as I thought in the previous vote. So for me, those are the two things that changed in my mind. I can't speak for everybody on the committee, but those are the things that made me reconsider and direct the superintendent to provide the transportation on the days in question so far.
So Portsmouth and Middletown provide transportation, but they're using statewide transportation?
That's right. They provide it.
They provide, but they're using statewide, they're not.
But they pay for it.
That's it. Principal said they use statewide.
Don't they use Ocean State?
No.
It's statewide transportation, they contract, one district contracts with Ocean State, statewide transportation.
But they get a different.
Right, but Ocean State's a private company.
Correct.
Okay.
But they're under statewide contract.
But it's under the statewide contract.
They contract out differently.
Right.
They have a different contract.
So Portsmouth and Middletown are contracting out with Ocean State?
Right, they don't do it the same way we do it.
They transport on those days.
Right, so they transport on, just wanted a clarification.
Ms. Neary spoke.
I just wanted a clarification, that's, I got it, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Leary.
I was just curious, Portsmouth is a different one, is the Ocean State, am I correct?
The company?
Yeah.
Yes.
So there's two different companies.
I think you actually know details.
No, 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 the problem, I just wanted to clear the private companies through the states.
They're all private.
Thank you, absolutely, thank you.
They're all private, we knew that, it's just who's paying for it.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the parents for coming in this evening, and thank you for Durham for being here as well. Thank you.
Next item, next item on the agenda is 6.1, request of approval for policy 5336, cellphone usage on the first reading. Dr. Flowers.
Thank you very much, okay. This is Newport public school students' cell phones and related devices. It's not very long, but I'm going to read it. Excuse me, cellphone slash related device such as iWatch, iPad, et cetera, use is restricted or prohibited within a class setting unless the classroom teacher has given permission or it is a necessary part of the educational process. Classroom teachers will warn a student regarding inappropriate classroom use and then inform the dean upon further inappropriate usage. Administration and/or the dean may confiscate a student's cellphone for a period, a class period, or up to a day. They also have the right to restrict a student's cellphone usage longer. Cell phones, related devices are allowed to be used during passing time, from class to class, that is, and during a student's assigned lunch period. Photographing or videoing without consent is strictly prohibited and will result in confiscation. Now, we differentiate it from the grade levels. The use of cell phones and related devices by students is limited according to the following. Pell Elementary School students are not permitted to have cell phones in their possession. Thompson Middle School students must keep their cell phones in their lockers at all times. Rogers High School, cell phones and related device use is prohibited within a classroom setting unless the classroom teacher deems use is a necessary part of the particular lesson and has given permission. Next, all classroom and special subject teachers will warn a student of consequences regarding inappropriate and/or unauthorized use of the devices, and will inform the dean upon the student's further use. Administration and/or the dean has the authority to confiscate a student's cellphone. Any of the aforementioned staff have the authority to restrict a student's cellphone or related device usage. Students may use their cell phones and related devices while passing from class to class and during their assigned lunch period. Photographing and/or videoing without consent is strictly prohibited and will result in confiscation of the device. And this proposed policy is in compliance with policy 5335 internet use and policies 5550 and 5560 student discipline. I realize as I was reading this, the, there's a chunk at the top, that first paragraph is a little bit redundant here, except it explains that the related devices, as, such as iWatches and iPads, et cetera, means anything else they're going to invent by the time this is put into effect. So there.
Thank you, any questions? Ms. Bowlen.
I will not be supporting this tonight, because I still believe that cell phones, we should not be allowing them at the high school between classes, and therefore, and I'm still, you know, looking into other options, and I will not support it.
Mr. Jim.
Mr. Leary.
Mr. Long wrote a wonderful article back on September 19th, and I had a couple of questions, one, Ms. Bowlen might answer yours. Quote he put for you was that it's inconsistencies that caused the problems, said Mrs. Bowlen. Is that your quote, was that true? Do you feel that's comfortable?
Inconsistencies amongst teachers.
In the policies with, the policies of the school with the cell phones. It says.
That was, yes, it, with the way it was originally written, it, it really was addressing high school and didn't address middle and elementary, but then it was a more, it, it became more of an issue for other reasons, but that was my initial.
Thank you. And Mrs. Neary said, a quote from Mr. Long, "It's unfair to navigate multiple sets of rules." Do you still feel that way?
I do, that's why I have a suggestion on this, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Neary.
So speaking of that, for Rogers High School, it says cellphone slash related device use is prohibited within the classroom setting unless classroom teacher, I think it just simply should say cellphone slash related device use is prohibited within the classroom setting. I think that's where the period, that's where we need to put the period. If during, if during the day, a particular faculty member says, go ahead, you can use it, that's fine, but I think it needs to be clear, this becomes a little bit left to own devices, like, well, I need it, it's not consistent, and from classroom to classroom to classroom to classroom. So that's what I would suggest, that we just simply say, it's prohibited within a classroom setting, done. And so if an administrator walks into a classroom and a cellphone is visible, then it's a, it's a direct violation of the policy, unless then said faculty says, well, you know, I allowed it, but then again, it's, then it's still a violation of policy. Now, this is, it's left a little bit to each, each teacher to decide. There will be, some teachers will say, well, that's fine for my classroom, and others will say, well, it's not fine for my classroom, and across the building, it's not consistent. So I still don't think this is consistent, I think it, we should just say, it's not allowed in the classroom, in a classroom setting. That's my, that's what I would say.
Ms. Bowlen.
I'd like to ask Dr. Flowers, how did this verbiage come together at the high school?
A great deal of talking and understanding that, obviously, there's no problem with the elementary grade. A great deal of talking and understanding that, obviously, there's no problem with the elementary grade. And at the middle school, they seem to have set that in, pretty much, works pretty well. But the feeling among us when we were discussing this was that our high school students are not elementary or middle school students, but they are young adults approaching adulthood.
My question.
And also, no, this one, finish, and also, we had been getting the information that there are some of the educators who see the value of certain apps on the cellphones, there are certain uses. I'm not wed to any of these things, this is just where we had worked it out, and we tried to make this as clear as possible. I understand what Mrs. Neary was saying, that if you say, no, no cellphones, and, but the teachers have to, the educators have to know, right as soon as this passes, whatever it says on the second reading, that this is pretty much carved in stone. That they will not be allowed to let the youngsters use this.
That's fine, we have one to one.
So my question again was, who participated in that? Did you, when you say we?
The subcommittee, and input that had come in.
From a lot of teachers?
An input that we had gotten from along the line.
Right, from the teachers.
Mr. Vance had put together some of these suggestions, and we kind of chipped away and chipped away at a lot of that, and, and of course, the consequences don't seem to bother anyone. We know very well that some students will, may, they may have their phones on them. I mean, I would ask, do you want, you know, this, this can be edited any way you feel. Like I say, I'm not wed to one way or the other, if you just want to say across the board, cellphones are not permitted.
Yes, my reason for asking was to find out that there was teachers and administrations from the high school participating, and if that's the case, I would support this because I have seen high school students who have, who, who will put it away as directed, but when, you know, most of them will put it away when directed, and you want to, you know, have them at that age learn how to use it properly, and they should not be addicted to it. So I would be voting for it, just making sure, that's why I asked the question, is that you engage teachers and the administration at the high school level, thank you.
So I'm just gonna add, I would possibly recommend that we possibly amend it as presented. I know I won't be supporting it this evening based on the classroom use. To Ms. Bowlen's point, I don't agree wholly with the no cellphones in the high school. Mr. Vance clearly stated as well with the dean and other administrators that they didn't feel that they could not manage the phones at the high school, but they did suggest in the classroom setting there was an issue, as well as the fact that we do have the Chromebooks one to one, and they felt that there's enough technology that students shouldn't be asked to use their phone in the classroom on a, on a routine basis. So again, I would not be supporting it as written this evening, but I don't know if there's any other discussion on it.
Would you just like to have it pulled and have us work on it some more, and just trim it right down?
I would be happy to have it amended to Mrs. Neary's point of cellphone related device use is prohibited within classroom setting, period. Strike the last sentence, or the last portion of that. This is the first reading, it does have to be read next month, and if there's disagreement with that portion of it, I would assume there'd be testimony here next month before we approve it on the second reading, so.
And by that, I mean.
Okay, is Mrs. Nash, are you?
Dr. Flowers.
Can you track this, this is a PDF, I can't write on it. Okay, so, okay, so we'll have a period right after the word classroom setting?
After the word setting would be a period.
Now, what about in the hallway or at lunch?
I have no problem with the rate, there's only the one sentence that I have personally a problem.
And that's only for the high school's case?
Just for the high school. The rest of the document's fine as it is presented. So we will, we haven't had a motion yet, so the motion, if Mrs. Neary, Dr. Flowers.
Okay, I'm sorry, the initial paragraph, where it says cellphone related devices.
Take it out, setting again.
I think that, some of that can, is redundant. We'll have to do some editing of the first paragraph also, before the second reading. Because you have to list those related devices, because.
Well, so, maybe perhaps, Mr. Galvin, could you give us an opinion on, I mean?
If I'm following the discussion, I see two modifications. I see you entertaining a motion to accept the policy with a modification of putting a period after the word, or the words class setting in the second line of the first paragraph, removing the rest of that sentence, as well as putting a period after the end of the words classroom setting in the first sentence after Rogers High School, which is the third bullet in the policy, and removing the rest of that sentence. So that's what I see your motion.
So, could you do that one more time, Mr. Galvin, sorry, so the first sentence, there'd be a period after classroom setting?
Yeah.
And scratch out unless the classroom teacher?
Yes.
Correct?
Oh, scratch the rest of that sentence out.
Correct.
Okay, and what's the second one?
Same thing after the third bullet of Rogers High School.
Wonderful.
In the first setting.
Third bullet, students?
In the first sentence, classroom setting, period, and remove the rest of that sentence.
So motion, thank you, Mr. Galvin, so a motion would be in order to approve the first reading of the policy based on those changes being made to the document, is there a motion in that? Mrs. Neary, is there a second? Is there a second?
Can I second, ma'am?
You still can, yes, yes ma'am. Motion been made by Mrs. Neary, seconded by Dr. Flowers, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion fails, so I guess we'll have to pull that, bring it back next month.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda, six point two.
Mr. Chair, what was the vote on that?
Three, three. Myself, Mrs. Neary, and Mr., uh, Mrs. Flowers, Mr. Leary, Ms. Boeckrich, and Ms. Bowlen voted no.
I didn't hear the nays.
Three ayes, three nays.
Mr. Jim, I think you have some of the same.
I had a question, I know I'm on a board, but.
Step right up to the podium.
I am not signed up, I apologize.
No, you don't have to do this.
I have a question.
Yeah, this is not.
Thank you for the opportunity, as always.
Just identify yourself, please.
David Cusajani, I'm a middle school teacher of science at the grade six, I am also the president of TAN. So you're not in an enviable position on this, and I'm sure many school committees across the state are wrestling with this as well. So I was wondering what is, what policies are going into place in other districts? Specifically, I know Providence, it's been in the Providence Journal a lot, so the, the school committee, the school district in Providence is having great difficulty with cellphones, and they're supposed to come out with a policy. And I know that the commissioner has been following up on this, and RIDE sometimes is very good at throwing you the football on things, they'll say, yeah, catch this, it's, it's district, it's up to the district. And I'm just, I'm wondering, and for you, Mr. Galvin as well, what is going, what are they doing in terms of cellphone policies in other places, and specifically Providence, which is an urban community?
It's not something I've researched completely, it's something I think the committee, the subcommittee, has looked at. I don't know if they have all the districts and all the policies, but it's something that they've reviewed in putting that together.
And I'm wondering if we could look into that prior to next meeting, perhaps, that's all, you know?
Good idea. Dr. Flowers.
This was not just thrown together.
No, I, I'm not implying that at all.
You're not saying that, no, no, I know you're not saying that, but I mean, it was, you know, looking, and you can get all these things online to see, do they have a policy? Some were, you know, a couple of lines, and some of this was, it was sort of a synthesis of what seemed to be the most reasonable way of looking at things, while still recognizing that our high school students should be mature enough to start learning how to use these particular devices appropriately, and in a, you know, just in an appropriate fashion, and if it's, and of course, the consequences, again, should be there, because that puts teeth into whatever the school polit, the school manuals say, and also what the teacher says. That's, that's an important thing, too, that, you know, you need to have some backing anytime you find that someone is not following the.
I, you know, I listened to Mrs. Neary, we just need something that's fair, firm, and consistent, that we can follow without any ambiguity, you know, that's, because otherwise, it becomes a situation where it's a, like, I don't hate to use the word, but decriminalized, you know? And so, it, it just, it causes some problems, that's all, you know, just being in the position that I'm in. So it's easier for me to follow a policy that's clear. I'd love to see one come right down from the state, but I don't think we're there yet, that's all.
We, we, one of our committee members, who's not on the school committee anymore, but she did say that there is something coming down, and we always say, coming down from Providence. So there might, there may well be, I need to rewrite this again one more time, just to be in line with the, the state practices.
Maybe we could find out where the commissioner is on this issue, I don't know.
This should make it a symbol for the teachers.
All right, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, next item on the agenda, six point two, request for approval of policy five one four six, in-school observation on the first reading, I don't know if you would like to defer to the spread. Mrs. Andrade, or would you like to explain?
Perhaps she could really, seeing how it was brought forth from that particular department, certainly.
Mrs. Andrade, thank you.
So are you looking for just a general overview of the policy? So we are frequently asked by outside evaluators if a parent is having their child evaluated, a neuropsych or a clinical evaluation, those folks will come in to the school to observe the child. And so this policy just looks at keeping that, again, consistent across all schools, making sure that every school is providing some supervision with that person while they're there, and then also maintaining the privacy and confidentiality of all students, and minimizing disruptions in the classrooms. It includes a signature for the parent that they understand, or evaluator, that they understand the policy, and that they will maintain confidentiality of the policy.
Thank you, any questions for Mrs. Andrade?
So, I mean, it seems like it's written for kind of high school, like, could this be mixed up at all with parents coming in to just work in the classroom?
No, because this is for observational purposes, so we do get requests for parents to come in, they want to come and see, you know, what their child is doing in the classroom, and this policy would apply to them as well.
So if you're not volunteering?
Different.
Mrs. Neary.
I think if I may make just one suggestion, I think the policy makes sense, if, maybe at the end of the first introductory paragraph, I guess just one big sentence, paragraph adding, or putting it at the beginning, but adding that this is really, this policy is really set up to protect the confidentiality. I know there's a form in the back, but to say at the very beginning of the policy, the purpose of this is to protect the confidentiality and the privacy of each child, so that's just on the, right at the beginning, because if one is just reading it and doesn't go to the second page, there could be a question, well, why do I need to do that? That's why the policy's there.
Sure.
So that would be my suggestion, just adding that sentence at the beginning.
Yep, can I write on this one?
I would suggest that we add the sentence now, so let's, let's wordsmith the sentence.
Say in order to provide.
In order to, I can, just after the second line where it says in order to, I'd say maintain privacy and confidentiality of all students while minimizing disruption.
There we go, in order to maintain.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the policy as amended this evening?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Next item is six point three, this discussion item can be pulled, we thought there might be a possible agreement between Council ninety-four and the Newport School Department to ratify this evening, but that is not ready at this time. Our next item, six point four, is request for approval of the gymnasium entrance hallway roof repair at RHS. Mr. Harrow, if you'd like to give us a couple of sentences on what's up.
Good evening, Town Harp Superintendent of Facilities, really quite simple, that the roofs on both the gymnasium hallway and the five hundreds area connecting hallway to the five hundreds wing have been leaking for quite some time. And keeping with the phrase that's put out by RIDE, we need to keep the schools warm, safe, and dry, or it's kind of tough to do that with leaking roofs. It's not just a case of having the potential for interior damage in the building, but creating unhealthy conditions, not providing the type of learning environment that the students deserve, so I might just think that we need to repair these roofs and take care of the water infiltration.
Okay, Mr. Leary.
So you forgot one thing that's very important, and don't forget it. Two thousand fourteen, the voters approved a ten million dollar bond. Half that money was supposed to go to do Rogers roofs, the other half to fix up City Hall. They ran over it in City Hall, so all we had was three point five million dollars. We did most of the roofs at Rogers. So those roofs of Rogers have all been done, except for the five hundreds, and except for the hallway. So don't, I don't want the people to get the impression, the assumption, that we're forgetting to do the buildings. They passed the bond, it was all done less than three years ago, and we put all roofs on most of the building, but there wasn't enough money because of City Hall to finish it. Am I correct?
No, Mr. Leary, in fact, you're, you're slightly off on that, so there were five sections of roof that were replaced on five wings, and not five wings in their entirety, on the academic wing where sciences are. In fact, the only section that got replaced was above the library, not the entire wing. So you had five wings, approximately half of the wings got new roof surfaces, and none of the connecting hallways, and the part of the bond that was passed for the roof was approximately two to three million dollars. That was specifically for the roof, so the money that was approved in that bond for the roof, in fact, did get used for the roof, but it just was not enough to do the entire project.
So my impression was that three point five million dollars was used on the roofs?
It was three million one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars.
So I want the voters to know that they've at least started on this, I don't know how far it was, but we've, we've started fixing the roofs.
Yeah, approximately forty percent done if you look at the total roof surface area.
Okay, so there'd be a motion in order to approve this repaired to the gymnasium entrance roof?
Fair to face, Mr. Chairman, where's the money coming from?
We can have discussion on the motion once we make the motion.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve made, made by Ms. Boeckrich, seconded by Dr. Flowers, discussion on the motion, Mr. Leary.
Yeah, so where's the money coming from?
So that money comes from the repair and maintenance funds that the school committee has set aside, along with the administration, that is part of the budget, and that is sufficient to pay for the repairs.
And so the, the money is on the city side presently?
No, the money's not on the city side, it's part of the school department's repair and maintenance budget for Rogers High School.
And how much is in that budget?
I don't have the exact amount of what's in the total budget, like, we leave Rogers at approximately a hundred and eighty thousand, I do know there was some reduction to that budget due to some other funding constraints. So what the new number is, I can't tell you, but it is certainly over one hundred thousand total for repair and maintenance.
So, Ms. St. Germain, did we transfer money, we used to have a one percent of our budget, was that transferred to the city?
No, we have our, we're following the RIDE regulations as far as the amount of funding we have to put in the budget per the new regs, so we have that, and you're asking about the Rogers budget?
No, I'm asking about, we used to have one percent, it was transferred over to the city, that they would take on the repairs and maintenance of the one percent, so that one percent of our budget is still. So, that one percent of our budget is still in there?
Mr. Harab, if I'm not mistaken, we put that in the school budget, correct?
Yes.
And we also have some funding from the city?
So, there's two different situations, Ms. Leary. So, the school department in their budget has money for repair and maintenance at all of the school buildings. The city has capital improvement money that is set aside that can be used for capital improvement projects at the schools, which would be approved by the school committee in terms of the project itself and the scope, and then would also have to go to the city council to approve use of those funds, because those specific funds do fall in the city budget.
And how much is in that fund, the ca-, city capital improvement fund?
The capital improvement budget total is, if I remember correctly, approximately three hundred and twenty-one thousand.
And that's all in the city side?
That is on the city side.
Okay.
And, again, specifically for projects that are classified as capital improvements.
And the repair and maintenance for Rogers is one hundred thirty-three thousand.
Dr. Flowers.
Just one little question, about when will, when do you foresee this being done?
Well, we already have proposals from the vendor, that's how I know the numbers, so basically, as soon as we can get them on board, if this is approved, we'll be calling them to get them in, hopefully, well before we get adverse winter weather.
And bad weather, okay. It's, it's needed.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Next item is carried along with the same explanation, six point five, request for approval of Rogers High School five hundred hallway roof repair. Is there a motion to approve as presented?
Yes.
Is it, uh, okay, uh, motion made by Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Bograth. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have Mr. Harab give us a breakdown each time he does one of these. I totally support any repairs, but I need to have him to break down the money starting with this, where it's coming from, so we know each time going forward, you know?
As it says in the projection, it's coming out of the Rogers High School-
Correct. I mean, if he spent, he gives a breakdown, must have spent a hundred and thirty thousand, oh, no, on this, we spent twenty thousand on this. I'd like to have his breakdown each time he does something.
Mr. Harab?
Well, I can certainly give you a, an accounting of what the proposals are and the amounts of the proposals. All of that information would be retained with the school committee in your school committee notes, so you certainly would see every project that, quite frankly, is approved by the school committee. I have no authority to approve the projects, I can only make recommendations, so you will always have that information in front of you, based upon your own approval or disapproval.
Thank you.
I'm asking for a breakdown, not hard, just break it down, give it to us, and give it, because I-
It's in there, it's in there, it's-
Mr. Leary?
What kind of breakdown would you be asking?
So, in other words, he comes up here two months now, and says he's going to fix this, and it's four hundred thousand dollars, and we approve it, and you say, "Where's, where's the money from?" And we're going to say, "From that account," and somebody says, "Oh, we already spent that money in that account." So, you should be able to align item on that account, if it starts with a hundred thousand, we spent ten, now we get ninety, and then eighty, and then seventy, and sixty.
Understood. I'll make that-
All I'm looking for is line item.
I understand that, I'll make that correction's upcoming agendas. Dr. Flowers?
Yeah, um, I'm just pulling up the expenditure report for the, coming up later.
You can't use it.
Please, I, I, this is, you know, this is not my, my specialty, but like, say, for example, facilities, would this come under facilities?
Correct.
And that would become under professional contracted services?
No, no.
No, that would probably come under property contracted services?
It would, it would come under the repair and maintenance line item in the budget.
Oh, okay, all right, I have to find, so, we probably have that, and then, it's all listed, how much you started with, and how much your bids are, and then it says remaining, so, we can get it, you just have to-
Correct, and certainly, certainly, with budgets being very important, if I had a proposal for a project that exceeded what was in the budget, because I was accountable, and I'm still accountable for my old job until two thousand and twenty-one, signed for hundreds of millions of dollars that I'm still accountable for, I certainly am not going to make a recommendation to award a project if there's not enough funds to complete.
Thank you, Mr. Harab.
So, we are getting that, that information.
Thank you, Mr. Harab, I appreciate your time, I know you have long days, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six point six, request for approval of REMO-U between Brown University and Rogers High School with an explanation coming from Dr. Bean.
So, we're looking to renew our contract with Brown University for the college and career support that we give, with a big focus on our, on students of poverty and our first-generation students attending college.
Um, so I see the, the financial numbers here, is it pretty much the same as last year?
Uh, each year, it's going up a little bit.
Okay.
Um, that was part of the agreement, it was a grant that was fully funded with the understanding that each year, our portion would go up.
Uh-huh.
Uh, it's covered by a grant.
Okay.
Our contrib-, yeah, our contribution increases, yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowden, did you have a question?
My question was hers, but I will say that the value of this is just incredible to our students, what, what they get and the pressure it takes off of our guidance counselors, you, you can't measure it.
Absolutely, and if you've been to any of the assemblies when the students are announcing, you know, which college they're going to, and all the work that this team does from Brown and the collaboration with our guidance department, it, it's wonderful.
I agree, I'll echo those sentiments, that, that was very helpful, my son, who was a senior last year, made great use of it, and it was very useful to him, so, I agree. Is there a motion to approve as presented this evening?
So moved, second.
Ms. Bowden, seconded by Dr. Flowers, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Six point seven, request of approval of agreement with Great School Partnership. Dr. Bean?
So, this is work that we've been doing a couple of years with Great School Partnership, called the Rhode Island Learning Champions, districts from around the state, we developed cross-curricular high school graduation proficiencies. So, what I'm looking to do this year is to bring a team and work directly with Thompson. This year, we have curriculum liaisons for every content level at Thompson, and the administrative team felt that this would be a perfect fit, working with the curriculum and developing interdisciplinary assessments with the four major content levels, working with the curriculum liaisons, that way they can bring the work right into the grade level, the department level, the common planning, the early release days, and it's also provided through a grant.
Is there a motion to accept as presented this evening?
So moved.
Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Bograth, any discussion, questions for Ms., Dr. Bean? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Uh, next item, six point eight, request for approval of inter-agency agreement with Newport Community School. Dr. Bean?
We just got approval from the grant we wrote this summer for the McKinney Vinto homeless program that we support, and one of the pieces, we have David Viera, who works for the community school, support our middle and high school students, while Rebecca Gomez and Mark McKenna and I support the students at Pell. So, this is an agreement to work with the community school, with David in that role to support Thompson and the high school. And again, it's paid through the grant that we just got approved.
Is there a motion to approve as presented this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Neary, seconded by Dr. Flowers, any discussion or questions for Dr. Bean? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, Dr. Bean. Next item, I believe, six point nine, we've done, six point ten is request for approval on RFP to, for district cell phones. Mr. Leary?
Yes, um, Ms. Germaine, could you go through this, with this, I know we all have, it's in front of us, or a copy, that we have seventeen cell phones. I did send some questions, I'm sorry, let me apologize again, I, I use my phone all the time, so I'm more texting than, you know, looking at email, but it's all the same. Nowadays, a phone, I think, is a computer in your pocket personally. So, I did send questions to you previously about the seventeen phones at fifty-four a month, that, and the nine hundred and thirty dollars next to it, is that added together, or this total is six hundred and fifty-seven dollars?
It's the total, I added it.
That's, that's the total, yes.
Total is nine thirty for one month, or times twelve months?
One month.
One month, so the total would be eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Correct.
And where's the fifty-four seventeen phones, we pay for the phones too, or that's just, we own the phones?
I'm sorry, again, um, it depends upon the plan that we're on, but usually what, um, the plans, they allow upgrades of phones, et cetera, just depends upon the plan.
So, which, which company do we presently have?
Verizon.
Right. And, we're paying eleven thousand dollars for seventeen phones?
For seventeen phones, yes.
Correct. So, by contract, there's only one that's required, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, two things here, one, we have to go out for an RFP, I don't ever remember doing that, to look at where we're at with it, and I'm sure it's going to be competitive a business, and two, is that I think we could look at lifespan, which is now doing Google Voice. Lifespan Hospital has eliminated all those cell phones, they're going to Google Voice. So, I get we needed these phones for, you know, plan engineers and principals and system principals and deans and support staff and translators and family service coordinators and student test facilitator, but everybody has their own phone nowadays, and you can just do Google Voice, and you would get that done, and there's eleven thousand dollars we would be saving.
So, I will say, there's some parameters we need to look at, I don't know anything really about Google Voice. I will let you know that the city of Newport, they use AT&T and Verizon only, and they recommend only using vendors that own and control their own infrastructure, especially in a school system, we have to be very careful with FERPA, and we have to be fa-, very careful with privacy and confidentiality of data and use of anything that's on those phones. The city uses government discounts from each vendor as a competitive RFP, and at that point, they believe an RFP could not yield any better pricing of that. The vendor preference is based on signal coverage that the city uses, user preference and business relationships. The emergency responder use, our tran-, users are transitioning over to AT&T First Net Program, but all other users are choosing between Verizon and AT&T. So, there are some things we do have to look at as a school system, that's on, not similar to all businesses and organizations. We have to look at privacy, we have to look at federal law, we have to also be aware that, to your point, some of us in the school district, and me being one of them, has to be on an alert system at all times, twenty-four seven, for whether it's, has to do with natural disasters, or whether it has to do with school safety, or whether it has to do with a child alert, or any other kind of alert that comes across the city. So, we have been looking into this, Mr. Leary, since you have been asking about it, just to see what the city has been doing, and I would recommend that maybe we explore if we could do some of the same similar situation, or possibly work with the city and look at what they're doing to see if we could get better pricing, but most importantly of all, make sure that we're using a provider and a system that has control over their infrastructure and we can protect any data that goes over any of our communications tools.
So, this might even be-
And just for the audience, I have a cold, I don't usually talk like this, thank you.
Somebody with a bad voice from all those years of smoking and gin bills, just avoid that.
I do not.
Sounds good.
Never had one. Never seen one.
So, I think, I'm not sure, I mean, I, I don't know how it got to seventeen phones, I mean, that's crazy to begin with, and then the other thing is, by policy, Mr. Galvin, I know you wouldn't have that with you now, look at, I think it was supposed to go out anything over four thousand dollars to bid all the time, so this kind of reminds me, and it's kind of a, maybe a bad example, but the old fifty-dollar hammer, you know, the government, oh, sorry, I'll take it back, it's a hundred-dollar toilet seat, the government didn't want to, the guy just go out, just want another toilet seat, want another one, it comes in, they spend a hundred bucks for it, when somebody could have walked down to Home Depot and got one for ten bucks. I mean, maybe we can get just regular cell phones for them, call them when we need them, like for the plan engineers or whatever, I'm, just to me, we're going to have to make a lot of cuts here, people, I don't think your people are ready for the shift with these contracts you're passing. You could better get ready, you've got massive cuts, and I, I brought ideas up here for hundreds of thousands of dollars, and you've all rejected them, and they're all going to be in front and center of you again to do it, so, I mean, if I, I'll pick away each month, one thing, ten thousand, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, I'll pick it away, it's going to add up when we get done. If you want to continue doing it, that's fine, I can't continue supporting this the way it is, you know?
Well, before we have discussion, I'd like to have a motion.
Oh, two.
Yeah, if there's a discussion to put it out for RFP, if there is no, just, no motion, then there's no need for discussion.
Well, by policy, we have to go out for RFP.
What was that, was there a question?
By policy, anything over four thousand dollars has to go out to bid, am I correct?
No, if, if, if-
Nope.
Yes, sorry, Scal.
What's your say, Ms. Galvin?
I don't know how these were acquired, if it's by a master purchase agreement under the state, that is not a, an RFP process, so I don't know how these were acquired, but it's not always an RFP process, there is a master purchase agreement process available for some of these things.
So, we could be with the state doing these phones?
Absolutely, that's what the master purchase agreement process allows for, it, it, the competitive bidding takes place at the state level, ensuring low prices for the taxpaying public, so to speak, and it allows communities to piggyback or ride on the back of those competitive, the competitive process that the state runs.
So, knowing that, I'm not sure, my motion may be, I gotta think how, where does, Mr. Galvin, you can help me out, anybody else, um, maybe we need to explore this, like, with Google Voice and a couple other ways of doing this, but if anybody got an idea, I'm open.
Can I, can I ask, what do they, what do they use for Google Voice?
Your, your phone.
What device?
Your phone, I mean, your, this, wherever you have ideas.
So, you're going to walk around with your laptop?
No, no, your phone, use your phone, use your phone.
Hold it, that's it, you have phones.
Your own phone.
Oh, well, if you have a good enough plan.
May I make a couple suggestions?
Well, I would prefer a motion before we have discussion, we have no reason to have discussion, other than it was presented to us.
Is there a motion we could help with this?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Could I, could I ask one?
My motion would be to explore further, uh, the number of cell phones that we are designated, and also how we procure the phones when there's a new phone needed, because that could be a realist, well, we'll put that in, how we procure the new phones, because that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, any discussion?
Could I hear that again, please?
Kathy?
The motion is to-
Could I hear, could I hear the motion?
She is, she's trying, give her a minute, I'm sorry.
The motion is to explore further the number of cell phones that we are design-, that we have designated, and how we procure the phones when needed.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Mrs. Neary?
Can we add to that motion, I don't know if that's possible, can we simply add to that motion as well to research how the city is doing it, so, what type of contract they have?
You have to make a motion to amend.
Okay, I make a motion, oh my gosh. Okay, so, motion to amend, so we can add the city part of it. I don't know how that works.
Second.
You would make a motion to amend it based on adding how the city procures phones?
Right.
Correct.
Seconded by Ms. Bowden, is there any discussion on the amended motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Nay. I don't know what the, okay, I'll go back, all those voting in favor, please raise your right hand.
Aye.
All those voting against?
Was it?
The motion was five to one.
Okay, thank you.
To amend the motion. Now, we're back to the motion, amended motion, is there discussion on the amended motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying- Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying, raising your right hand, please. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, five to one. Next item, six point eleven, request for approval of tuition RFP for solar canopy parking lot at Pell Elementary School. Ms. Boerke.
Can I make a motion? Do I need to make a motion to make this?
Nope, you can discuss what your motion's, what you're asking for, and then we can make a motion.
All right. I have been trying to find ways to save money out there, and I'm also a very green person. So I have seen solar parking lots, canopy parking lots. I have then found in Massachusetts, I found them in, first in California, where they don't have a lot of snow. So then researched and found some in Massachusetts. So Lincoln Sudbury Regional High School have spoken to them about how they were able to put it in place. They did it with no capital outlay. They put out RFPs to do this through their electric company, and basically got ninety to a hundred thousand dollars worth of saves. They've spoken to the gentleman, both in the finance department, as well as the facilities department, and they gave me some heads up on some good tips. So I was hoping to work with Mr. Harp on taking this forward, to see if we couldn't do that here in the parking lots. It may need some little bit redesign, I don't know. But also, I'm possibly on that mound, if it's not in use, although today I did see there was lots of kids playing on that mound, so that may not be. But basically, the way they do it is they get a net, they got a net metering dollars from the state, and it has worked extremely well. They got the savings that they anticipated, so I'm hoping to just put out an RFP on that. So...
Well, Mr. Harp, if you could just wait for us to get a motion, just one second. If we could have a motion to approve the issuing of the RFP. Motion made by Ms. Boerke, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Discussion, Mr. Harp.
Okay, Tom Harp, Superintendent of Facilities. So I have spoken to Jerry Drummond, and the first thing he cautioned is that the programs that are available in Massachusetts are not available in Rhode Island. So he is providing a contact to me that knows about all of the different incentives in Rhode Island, who is eligible for the incentives, and how the programs work, and would even be willing to go as far as assisting in putting the RFP together. As soon as I have that information, I can pass it on to you, and you can share that with the school committee. But I say the first things first, we'll get some education from Jerry Drummond and his folks on what can be done in Rhode Island, and what are the programs in Rhode Island, and we'll get assistance with the RFP.
Perfect. And I do want to also bring up that we have been trying to have Carpionato Group, when they proposed their development in the North End, they said they wanted to do some initiatives with the public schools, along with solar efforts. And so we are also trying to reach out to them to see if there would be any interest in partnering with us on this venture. So that's also going on. But thank you.
Any other discussion or questions for Mr. Harp? Thank you, Mr. Harp. Any discussion on the motion?
Maybe we should then just wait, instead of having the motion now for an RFP?
Well, again, there's no, it's a request to issue it, but there's no timetable on it, if we'd like to pull it and wait.
No, I'd rather just have approval to go forward with it, and then we'll report on it as progress happens. If it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, but we would at least have committed to do something.
Okay.
We're trying to get saves in the budget.
Yeah, is there any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Seven. Next item is Section seven, discussion. Seven point one is a technology update discussion. Mr. Leary has requested some update on the current status of technology and outstanding issues.
Yeah. If Mr. Patrick's not here, Colleen, you want to do that, if you don't mind?
Sure. I just wanted to make you aware that we continue to work with the city in custom computing, addressing the infrastructure and the network. The work is still ongoing. Teachers have been very patient, as well as staff, as far as the updating of our network. New firewalls are being installed, software is being updated, and we will have a forensic audit once most of the work with the consultants has been completed. We are keeping a tally of the costs for reimbursement with the city. I'm sorry, not with the city, with the trust. And the trust is aware of this, and they're working with us.
Do you have any ideas on how much we spent so far, or how much the trust has spent?
We have. It's approximately, it's up to about two-hundred thousand at this point in time, that we will file for reimbursement. And I just received that figure today.
And where are we with the Chromebooks?
Chromebooks have been issued. They've been reimagined. We are implementing our one-to-one initiative. I believe there's some confusion about Chromebooks missing. So we have thirty-eight that have not been returned. We know who has the Chromebooks, and we just need them brought back in to have them reimagined. But Mr. Vance and Mr. Quente have been working on this. I believe I also shared out with you how many Chromebooks we have, and off the top of my head this evening, I can't see, share that quote. I know it's over a thousand, twelve-hundred or so. So we have about thirty, I'm sorry? It's over two thousand Chromebooks we now have, and we have thirty-eight we still need to reimagine and have brought in.
So why are we collecting them now? We don't collect them at the end of the year?
Last year was our first year with the freshman initiative, and the principal, at that point in time, decided not for the, at that point, it was forty, I believe, that were not brought back. He felt at that time that he was going to be seeing the students back in September, so at that point in time, he felt he would address the issue then.
And what happens if they don't get returned?
They don't get returned, most likely we will file for insurance. And the second part of it is, I know where, we know who has the Chromebooks, so that's a discussion with the family, too, as far as reimbursement, et cetera.
In the letter, I'm jumping back and forth, I'm sorry. In the letter that, when we had the malware problem, the letter, they said not to open up, that could be for ransom, is still there, and we're getting around it?
So we're still working on this at this time, and I don't have any update on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on seven point one for Dr. Jemaine? Seven point two, curriculum plan.
That's me again. I just wanted to share with the committee, and this actually got brought up during the facilities discussion, that we're looking at three-year curriculum plan, K through twelve, and it's in your backup. And Dr. Bean and her team have been putting this together, but I wanted you to look at this because going forward, as part of some of our goals for the district and to improve student achievement, we wanted to make sure you were aware for purposes of budgeting, and also to understand the areas of focus based upon our assessment scores and our work we're doing professional development with the teachers, how we're moving this forward. This is an overall. You'll see it's K through four, five through eight, nine through twelve, and we have bullet points and highlights in each of those years going forward. And the years are twenty twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. I also want to bring to your attention that at the facilities meeting today, we had the discussion about in designing our facilities going forward, and how we're going to be implementing instruction and program studies, especially at the high school level, that we are doing a review of that, because what we thought possibly ten years ago for what should be a Rogers High School curriculum and requirement for graduation may be very different now, ten years later, with the changing population and demographics, as well as the needs of the future as far as high-paying, high-paying careers going forward. So is it really necessary in one content area that we ask all our high school students to take three years of this particular course, or is it we want to look at other areas within our curriculum, such as, I'm just, as an example, throwing out, in technology, or maybe in languages, because of the way the world is changing, and what we know our students are going to need now and going forward in the future. So that is the three-year plan, as far as highlights. This is being shared with you this evening. We're happy to come back and have further discussion with you on this, but it's also something, a priority, we want to keep in mind when we do our financing and budgeting for now and the future. Looping back to the Rogers High School curriculum, we also want to look at that, as far as financing and the type of staffing we want to have in our schools to provide a high-quality education for all children.
Can you tell us what a YAG is?
Year at a glance.
Thank you.
A YAG is a, YAG is an acronym that the teachers and the assistant superintendent and others use, and it means year at a glance.
You might want to put that on the document.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just one comment.
Mrs. Neary.
It seems, just broadly looking at the three-year curriculum chart in terms of staffing need, that there's a recurring theme that we need ELO, more ELO instructors, looks the same, Pell, Thompson, and Rogers. So just, there was a, it kept coming through.
Yes, that is correct. And even tonight, at the facilities subcommittee meeting this, later this afternoon, right before our meetings this evening, I even shared with the group that I will not be surprised in two to three years if half our students are fluent in Spanish and not in English. So that is something, as far as staffing purposes and skills and training, we need to give our teachers going forward, that we will need to keep in mind.
And can I just add to that? If, if that's the situation we find ourselves in, this is a pipe dream, pipe dream possibly, but could we think about, again, long-term, where our students will be going, thinking about implementing a bilingual classrooms, like bilingual education, so that English-speaking students, we can educate all of our children in both English and Spanish.
Right.
At least, at least one classroom in each grade, that would be a fully bilingual classroom.
Right.
This is obviously a ten-year, fifteen-year pipe dream, but it's also the world in which we live, so...
Correct.
Having students who graduate and are fully bilingual, both the Spanish speakers and the English speakers, is something we may want to consider, as we need more staffing for ELO anyway.
Correct. I agree with you, and it aligns to the discussion about the Rogers curriculum. So what is it we really want our children to excel at?
Any other questions on seven point two? Okay, moving along. Seven point three, school safety plan. Superintendent Jemaine.
I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, it's this time of year, right now, our principals are reviewing their school safety plans. They submit them into the Newport Police Department for review. We make changes and revisions as asked or recommended by the Newport Police. We also set up our trainings. So all our school personnel will be having more trainings in the coming months for their day-to-day practices in the school building and during special events or catastrophes. We will have these plans available to you. We will not be making them public, but we will have them for your review in November, if you want to come into the office and take a look at them.
One comment.
Now, Mrs. Bowden.
Could we make sure that we, that there is like a plan for all of the required drills that are supposed to happen? Because I know that last year, we ended up being, not fitting them all in, and so they did drills on the last day of school at the high school, which is, let's face it, that did nothing. It was the teachers that did the drill. So we need to make sure that there's a, like a schedule for drills.
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Could you add that to the report that you'll be providing?
The schedule.
The schedule.
When the drills will take place?
I don't know. I'm going to let you know that, because sometimes they are by surprise. But I will, I will check to see.
Work on that.
Okay.
I'll explain it better.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Neary.
One question, I see Alice training for Rogers and for Thompson, are those, those are for teachers, not students?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions on seven point three? Seeing none. We'll move on to Section eight, which is the consent agenda. Eight point one, approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented this evening?
So moved.
Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boerke. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight point two is personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve eight point two as presented this evening?
So moved.
There is one correction to be made on eight point two A, A fifty-nine. The person in that slot has asked to be pulled, have their name pulled from consideration. So the motion would be, eight point two A would be with the exception of, approval with the exception of A fifty-nine, which is requested to be pulled from the position. Any discussion on eight point two personnel actions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, in essence, a time vote, no, not against any of the candidates or the stipends.
Bless you.
I'm concerned, I've been trying to get this list of stipends, how many we have, and how much money. So, haven't got it yet, so just in essence of time, I'm just going to vote no on all things, so we don't have to pull anything that way.
Understood. Thank you. And, Mrs. Neary?
Yep.
Okay.
Just on A twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, is there a timeline on the certification and background check?
We have been speaking with our teachers. We have been working with them as, as soon as, as early as today to get them all finalized. So we are asking for the end of this week that we get them all in.
What happens if we don't get them?
They can't coach. They have to have them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's a deadline by which they need to provide them?
They have to, yeah, we have to have his. So we're getting everything lined up, but they have to have them, otherwise they can't go and coach, they can't go on the field.
Okay. And they were aware of that before they, we hired them, they were hired?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
I have a question. Aren't these sports going on now?
Soccer is.
Oh, the one is, I'll go back and check their files, see if we got the one. I know one we still have outstanding that we've reached out to the, I'll go back and check.
Well, I guess my confusion is because it's retroactive to nine-five, and I believe soccer is a fall sport.
It is, it is.
He also coached last year.
We'll go check their files tomorrow morning and report back. We have them.
Okay. Any other questions? No, no, no. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes five-one. Next item, eight point three, request for approval of invoices and requisitions. Is there a motion to approve as presented this evening?
So moved.
Yep.
Motion made by Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boerke. Is there any questions on eight point three? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Eight point four is request for approval of home instruction, is there a motion to accept as presented? Ms. Bowlin, seconded by Mrs., Dr. Flowers.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you tell us, Mr., let me know the total of home instruction of students we have?
Yeah, it says on the.
Sorry, don't have it. Total for, that's right, time's running out, they can do it.
Again, I just have to turn to the page, send it back up.
Thirty, wait, no, there's homeless. No, we passed here, there's a ton of military.
Yeah, we'll mention this right over here. Looking over here, I'm wondering, no, this is non-military, no, total, 34.
What's, they added together?
These are non-military.
So, you add 34 and 28?
No, you add 28 and six.
Right, 34.
Thirty-four, current.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Well, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I meant to say aye, I meant, I was a late aye.
Okay, motion carries five zero. Five with one on the. Number nine is monthly correspondence, is there a motion to accept correspondence as presented?
So moved.
So, the, we have monthly correspondence, we have a communication from DCYF repayment student process for students placed by DCYF in residential care, school improvement teams, and correspondence from Diane Sheen and Ree, the Newport Festivals Foundation. Motion to be made to accept those, you made the motion, was there?
I did, yes.
Seconded by Ms. Boatright, any discussion on those?
Yeah.
Ms. Boatright, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Neary.
For the school improvement teams, I appreciate how the high school has dates, draft meeting dates, which is great, but I don't see those at Thompson, oh, I'm just sorry, I'm sorry, I saw Thompson, but I don't have at Pell, so I'd like to see them for Pell, they don't have draft meeting dates.
Yeah, Ms. Westman's working on that.
Okay.
With her team.
And I'd like to ask that the, that each set team present to us after their, at our, at our next meeting, so if October 1st, Rogers set team is supposed to have met, I would like them to meet with, to present to us in, at our November meeting, and same with Thompson and with Pell whenever we have that.
Well, I will make that request, if they request December, will that be okay?
December's fine.
Okay.
But I'd like direct reports from those teams to us.
All right.
As they have the meetings, yeah.
So, you, would you like them, just from my own clarification, like them here at the meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's important for other parents to have access to, even if it's a snippet of a video, to know what is happening in their schools in terms of improvement, improving the, improving the schools.
Okay.
Just, they don't know, parents don't know it exists, this information doesn't get out, so, yep, thank you, thank you.
And I will just, so we have a motion to accept them as presented, and seconded, any discussion? I will just read the, one from Ms. Sheen, is a very nice donation from the Newport Festivals Foundation, that they had 100 Newport folk and jazz shirts of all different sizes and colors that they would like to give to Newport Public Schools, I said yes, of course. These are nice, good-looking shirts that will be delivered to Pell over the next few weeks, when they arrive, we can distribute them as we see fit, I will keep you posted. So, again, thank you to our partners, and Newport Festival Foundation is very good to the Newport schools, so again, we thank them for their donation. There's a motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, that's monthly correspondence. Next is reports from superintendent and staff, first one is 10.1, expenditure and revenue Any other questions on 10.1? Comments?
Can I make a comment?
Ms. Boatright.
I have made, I have made this comment, but I'm going to make it out loud, that we just need to change the budget format to add in a first column that says actual 2019, so we can see comparisons for the budget for going forward. Other than that, thank you.
So, just a private, prior year comparison?
Yep, actual prior year.
Okay.
And then I had a question on.
Ms. Bowlin.
On the freezer. So, the freezer, there's a freezer repair for $5,860, is that for Pell? I'll have to check that, but I'll be there tomorrow. Okay. All right, but I did ask for it earlier, so.
Oh, okay, is there any other comments? Then a motion, I mean, I would recommend if, we would make a motion to accept the reports from the superintendent and staff as presented.
So moved.
Ms., Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boatright, any discussion on the other reports? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is 11, suggested meeting dates and agenda items, and I believe we have several meetings as I catch up. So, future meeting dates, we have, let's see, that's, October 7th, most of those, that was today, so that's October 11th, we have a wellness subcommittee meeting in Newport Public Library, the Rotary Room, at 11:30 a.m. October 15th, at 5:30, there's a finance subcommittee workshop, Newport Public Library, Stride Room. October 16th, 6:00 p.m., there's a Newport School Committee, Newport City Council Joint Workshop on School Construction, and the City Council Chamber is at 6:00. October 17th, School Building Committee meeting, excuse me, at 5:30 in Actec Room 907. October 22nd, 12:30, Policy Subcommittee, Rogers High School, Room 304. October 22nd as well, the Community Charette at Rogers High School Cafeteria at 6:00 p.m. And November 12th, 6:30, Newport School Committee Regular Meeting here at Pell School. That is it on meeting dates and agenda items.
Oh, there's another, oh, there's a November 5th, I think, Kathy, right? For another community charette on the 5th, I remember this. Who's in do one? Pretty sure it's November 5th. And then I think the 11th.
We took one more. There is a charette on Saturday.
I have one, I'm sorry, I have one on the 5th and then the 9th, you're right, did the 5th one go away?
I don't have anything on that.
Okay, so just on the 9th, that's a Saturday.
So, November, and do we have a time and a place?
That one is in the morning, right?
Yes.
Nine to 10:30?
So, November 9th, thanks, November 9th, a charette, 9:30?
It's at Pell.
To 11 at Pell School. Okay. Next item is executive session, and we do have business for executive session tonight, so if somebody could read the motion to move into executive session as a motion.
Mr. Chairman, you skipped number 11, a, agenda item?
I did not, I just read it.
Oh, I'm sorry, my fault, I'll pay attention again. So, if we could for next month, I'd like to do each month, have Thompson committee present their schedule, and then maybe Rogers the following month, or whatever, whichever committee chooses. There's some periods at Thompson I'd like to know more about, and see how it's going, and what's on, and I can't think of the new name for the, what period they have.
Boost.
What's it called?
Boost.
Boost, thank you. So, things like that, and see where we're at with it, and I'd like to have a presentation and that, doesn't have to be long, obviously we know that, and, and the next month, look at Rogers and the schedule, how it's going, what the impact is on having this three-day, two-day rotation, what's impact on schedule, what's impact to staff, what they're required to do in that period, what's not required during that period, and TN could present their part, if that's the case, but it's important that we know that, we had a big mix-up last year in that period, and we all know Cullen was one of them, which is out there now, but, you know, so I would like to have a presentation by 7:00 in November, if that's acceptable to this committee.
Okay, understood.
And one, one last thing, let me, let me clarify, I'm sorry, what I said to Mr. Harrop, I'm a little, I don't speak that well, my voice is gone, but what I was trying to get to, and maybe you can help me out with this, I wanted to get a list of what we've done for each school, it does present to the people, and maybe to, if it's at Rogers, you can present to the new school, if it's at Pell, I want a list of, you put a window in a window in this school, and we've had $100,000, ours $90,000, and that's all I want to do, and you refuse to come up with that somehow, and I'm not sure you understood what I was saying, but I think I was trying to get that point of having a list going down, and each time you present it, now, I don't think that's unrealistic, I think it's important going forward with the public to see what you do.
Can I make a comment?
Mr. Neary first, sure.
Mr. Leary, I actually, as you were talking, I sent an email to the superintendent, so when you look at your email, making that request from 2014 to 2019 for each of those maintenance accounts to get an accounting.
That's even better, going, you're going back, yeah.
So, you'll, you'll see, I just, I did it while we were.
That's what I was trying to get to, I know, it's, it's me, it's not, I'm not blaming anybody else, you know, but that's all I was trying to do.
Ms. Boatright.
Right, there is a facilities committee of which Mrs. Bowlin is heading, and I'm on, and we wrote down, I think we need to keep a, a full listing of that, and we need to be working with Mr. Harrop to prioritize it, of which we did do much of that when we did the tour of all the buildings at the beginning of the year, back in August, we, he identified several items that he was hoping to repair.
But, all right, I get it, fine.
I think we get the work out.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so now we have executive session business, we need somebody to read the motion to move into executive session, please.
12.1, executive session. School committee may seek to convene, if warranted, executive session under jurisdiction of Rhode Island State Law, Chapter 46, 42 dash 46 dash 5, Exceptions A1, any discussion for the, of the job performance character of physical or mental health of a person or persons, provided that such person or persons affected shall have been notified in advance, in writing, and advised that they may require that the discussion be held at an open meeting, or A2, sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation, or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation.
So, there's a motion to go into executive session, is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Flowers, motion made by Mrs., Mrs. Neary, seconded by Dr. Flowers, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll adjourn into executive session.